To call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August 19th, 2019. We will begin tonight, as we do most of our meetings, with citizen comment on agenda items. I have a sign-in sheet and I will read your name and when I do, if you would come to the podium, adjust the microphone so we can hear you clearly, give us your first name and last name, if you would spell your last name for the record, and give us your address and perhaps the agenda number that you are speaking on, we'll go from there. Our first, and we have three minutes for comment.
Yep.
Yes, three minutes for comments. Our first speaker is Barbara St. John and Rhonda Valdez on deck. Still baseball season, so we'll keep that.
Yeah.
Right up here.
That was me.
That's right.
I hope I'm talking so you can hear.
Very good.
Closer? Barbara St. John, 3488 Emirates Street, Wheat Ridge. I know that hearing this evening is about tobacco and you'll be hearing lots of numbers, but I am concerned about the young ones coming up. My sixth and 10th grade grandmothers, this age group is embarking on waters they're not prepared for and can be taken advantage of. Tobacco is a gateway drug. It's our duty as adults to protect them. Tobacco is finally diminishing and then vaping came along. And more than helping people quit tobacco, it opened up new doors for teenagers. It's been a very positive atmosphere here in Colorado. We voted on marijuana and let that in and teenagers started using that and now they're doing the vaping. Stores are selling this and the edibles and it all seems okay to the young people. And there are very serious consequences to this. Physically, morally, legally, and financially. And we need to protect them so that they cannot get tobacco until age 21 and that the licensing of the dealers will take place. And many other states and cities have done this on our consideration. I was just looking today, Boulder is considering this right now. So I think it's, we should get with it and take care of those two measures, age 21 and licensing the dealers.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rhonda Valdez and Michelle Mitchner on deck.
My name is Rhonda Valdez, Rhonda R. H. Jones V. A. L. D. Z., 8747 West 40th Avenue, Terminal 14, Lakewood, Colorado, 827. I am a nurse and I work at Wheat Ridge High School. I am their health nurse and also their drug intervention services. I'm on a grant right now and it's for three years, this is the third year. And my work is to support students who are vaping, have a tendency towards vaping, have been consequence for vaping or a preventative effort. One of my preventative efforts is with the V Team, Breathe Easy Team, and I'm certain this group has probably heard of it. What it is, we promote smoking cessation or just breathing easy. One of the things we did last year, and I can leave these with you, their vaping posters we put up in the bathrooms. So this one says, "Some of the grossest things in this bathroom are in that vaping." And I want that team to come and talk to you if they ever get an opportunity because this made a stir. A school, a stir, yeah, at our high school. So, but that's the first thing. And then the second and last thing is, I had a student, right before winter break of 2017, I had my health aide call me down to my office and I was just going to go to lunch because we're having that and we're going to go on break. And she goes, "Don't you do something with smoking cessation?" I said, "Yeah." She goes, "I have a student here who wants to stop smoking." And I go, "Absolutely." Send him down to my office. He comes down, his name is Jim Lynch, you probably heard him on NPR radio a couple of months ago. He, his grandmother, his mother, all, everyone at the home smoked. Started with cigarettes, then went to vaping. He says, "I want to get off it. I need your help." I said, "Absolutely. Let me show you some resources that I have, the Stanford Smoke Kit, talked about some things that we do at Wheat Ridge." He took it to heart, that break, he got off cessation of smoking and he then went down to Capitol, had to take two bus rides for a suit. I was like, "Should I give him a ride?" I'm like, "No, let him do his thing. He's good at this." 11th grader, he testified in front of the Senate that there should be local control of tobacco. And that's what we're here today to request, to have local control over tobacco here at Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michelle Mitchner and Lynette Namba on deck.
Hello, that's me, I'm Michelle Mitchner, I T. C. H. E. N. A. R., and I'm at 6775 West 26th Avenue. So I feel like I have small potatoes tonight with all the big conversations you guys have going on, but I'm here to talk about the shed setbacks in the R-1 district. So my story is, my husband was talking to a attorney earlier this morning about putting a shed up on our side of the fence and he said, "You better check the setbacks on there." Well, I always thought setbacks were, you put your shed by your fence, that's what I kind of thought it was. And I was really surprised to see that Wheat Ridge has a 15-foot setback for a shed in the R-1 district. So I started calling it the floating shed provision because it seems rather ridiculous to put a shed 15 feet of width in the fence. It leaves a lot of negative space in the back and it's not serving any purpose in my opinion. It's not really bothering my neighborhood by having the shed on the fence. So it said in the zoning that the intent was to provide high-quality, safe, quiet, stable, low-density residential neighborhoods for activities incompatible with low-density residential neighborhoods. And to me, a shed is kind of a part of having a large lot. I live in a part of Wheat Ridge that has a lot of army, or, excuse me, agriculture going on. So we need a place to put some of those items. And it just, it's such a waste of space and isn't pleasing in the yard in my opinion to have it kind of floating. So that's my two cents on the shed setback. And the other consideration was when I started looking at other cities, Lakewood, Golden, Arvada, I'll count anywhere from zero to 15. So it didn't make sense that Wheat Ridge has that long provision. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lynette Namba and Lori Odom on deck.
Hi, I'm Lynette Namba, M.A.M., the 2977 Wheat Street, and I'm speaking on 911. I am part of Citizens for Health in Wheat Ridge, that's our proprietor for this day. And I just wanted to share that personally and professionally. I support and urge a comprehensive policy that includes traffic 21 and traffic licensing to help decrease that speed of traffic.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Odom and Carol Matthews on deck.
There we go. Was it on?
I'm Lori Odom, O-D-O-M, 11490 West 38th Avenue. As a Wheat Ridge resident for more than 43 years, a mother, grandmother, retired physician, and now chair of Jeffco Council PTA Health Wellness and Safety Committee, I care deeply about the health of our next generation. We are aware that despite increasing reports of the short and long-term health risks from vaping, the use of e-cigarettes continues to rise among teens in Wheat Ridge. A 2018 survey by the CDC showed that Colorado has the highest rate of vaping by youth in 37 states surveyed. And a year ago, Jefferson County Board of Health adopted a resolution declaring youth vaping a public health crisis in Jefferson County. In June of this year, the Colorado PTA Board unanimously adopted a position statement which reads in part, quote, "Colorado PTA recognizes that the use of e-cigarettes and other tobacco products has negative effects on children, youth, and young adults. There is a high rate of nicotine addiction in these age groups, an increased likelihood of becoming long-term users of cigarettes and mind-altering drugs, and the possibility of irreversible lung damage. In addition, the nicotine, toxins, carcinogens, and other components of e-cigarette aerosol can adversely affect adolescent brain development. Colorado PTA supports legislation that increases the legal age to purchase all tobacco products to 21, supports taxing vaping products in a manner similar to cigarettes, the elimination of advertising and marketing of such products to youth, and encourages parents, guardians, and trusted adults to take an active role in the prevention of using such products," unquote. We know that youth are attracted by the flavors, discreteness of vaping, the hip vaping paraphernalia marketed by the industry, the easy availability and popularity of the products, and that they feel social pressure to vape or to jule. We recognize that efforts to prevent youth e-cigarette use must be approached comprehensively using influence of parents, caregivers, trusted adults, educational efforts in our schools and community, and legislation that can impact the age at which tobacco products can legally be sold, ban flavors that are attractive to youth, and increase pricing, including potentially taxing vaping products. As you know, any of these measures first entail licensing of all tobacco retail establishments. I strongly support such licensing and increasing the age to sell all tobacco products to 21 as well as any other measures mentioned that you deem appropriate for the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you for this study session.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Matthews and Jennifer Yates on deck.
Well, tonight I have two issues, but I want to thank everyone who's coming here for the vaping. I think it's a no-brainer to pass better regulations for vaping, but we also have some other issues in our city that are a no-brainer. First of all, the eminent domain issue. There's two questions on the issue tonight. If you will authorize the city staff to proceed against the citizens for the eminent domain of the property on Wadsworth, and if you will retain their right to at least a public hearing on this. This is changing these people's lives. You're taking their property and at best, you're taking their access to their property, rendering it pretty much valueless. Give them a chance. Give a public hearing to those who don't approve of it. Don't give it to the staff and make them the bad guys. Man up, woman up, face the people you're taking the property from. Do not give the authority for eminent domain to the city staff. Secondly, I'd like to speak on the issue of the property setbacks for storage sheds versus garages and large, major structures. And I mean, storage sheds are a tradition in Wheat Ridge and most of them are really close to the property line, as our former people have talked about. I really think nobody cares. Please separate these issues. It's a lot different to have a storage shed that is 10 by 10 and 10 feet tall on your property, or close to your property line with bicycles, implements, lawnmower. And it's a different thing to have a garage that someone could drive a semi truck in. The limitations on that is 15 feet tall and 1,000 square feet. Come on, let's consider this fairly. We don't want another thing like our flag lot and all these other things that are taken with little consideration. And also the administrative subdivision where it wasn't any big deal until all of a sudden, somebody had a flag lot in their neighborhood and then we're all going, "Oh God, what have we done? We've destroyed Bel Air." Come on, folks, let's take issues one at a time and relevance of both. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Yates and Guy Namiach on deck.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Yates. I live at 3700 Miller Street. I'm here to talk about vaping, obviously, tonight and I'm going to just go over some numbers that I said last time, but I think these numbers are just staggering and I think it's really important. Forty-four percent of Colorado youth have used e-cigarettes at least once. Thirty-three percent of Colorado youth are using nicotine regularly. Twenty-seven percent Colorado youth e-sig use is twice the national average of 13 percent. Thirty-eight percent increase in high school student use from 2017 to 2018, that's one year, that's a huge number. Fifty percent of Colorado youth think vaping is risky, while 87 percent think smoking is risky. Three hundred and fifty teens become regular smokers each day in the U.S. Ninety-five percent of adult smokers start before they're 18. 4.9 million youth were current tobacco product users in 2018 nationwide, 4.9 million. Ninety-nine percent of e-cigarettes sold in the U.S. retail stores contain nicotine and 90 percent of underage users are supplied by their 18- to 20-year-old peers. That means that we really need to get the access to the vaping products out of our schools and there are plenty of 18-year-old seniors in high school to supply them. And while Jule is playing the caring and helpful industry leader supporting the T-21 legislation, make no mistake that with the potential loss of the youth market share, they'll be back with more deceitful products and marketing. So please make sure that the decisions you make regarding the vaping ordinances include alternative products that we may not have thought of yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Guy Namiach and Laura Seacord on deck.
Hello, Guy Namiach, 3650 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. I want to talk about the zoning changes in ADUs. As a, I'm a local real estate broker and one of the questions that we commonly get as realtors is, you look around with your buyers and the question comes up, "What do you think is going to happen to that house? What do you think is going to happen to that lot? And you think they're going to build an ADU back there?" And usually it's, especially if you're in Englewood, for example, it's pretty predictable. On the east side of South Broadway, there are certain things you can do. On the west side of South Broadway, there's things that you can't do. So it's, you are able to predict it. Sadly, in Wheat Ridge, we're more and more not able to predict what is going to happen to our neighborhoods. What are they going to look like? Will an ADU pop up in the backyard? What is the home going to look like? And as people are having to spend more and more money for homes, that's a pretty relevant issue as you're investing a good chunk of your money. Maybe you're going to go somewhere where it's more predictable. I want to remind you that you adopted the NRS document a couple of weeks ago and the major part of, and that was part of the NRS that went around and one of the main things, the main, the highlights of the NRS was letting neighborhoods decide what's going to happen. They're deciding their fate, where they're going to look like. And I'm just going to ask you to, you know, one of the most, I remember hearing this over and over, "Why are you asking me? You've never listened to me. I've told you what I wanted." Well, finally, we've convinced them to tell us what they wanted, we've adopted it, I think we should be listening to them. Thanks. Let Applewood decide what Applewood would look like.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Seacord.
Hi there, my name is Laura Seacord and I am a mom here in Wheat Ridge and I have a daughter that attends Wheat Ridge High School. And I appreciate all the numbers, Jennifer, that you came up with. I do think that number is a little bit higher. I think that we really, really need to band together and make sure that we're taking care of our youth and that we put some sanctions on there and bring that number up to 21.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all of the speakers that I have signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who would like to speak on an item on the agenda? You may speak now if you'd like. I don't see anyone, so I will close public comment. Mr. Matthews, did you have a?
Yes, if you would, I'd like to respond to the comments on the vaping. And I hope you all, and I'm sure you will since it's the first agenda item. I've taken a look at this very hard and since this came up Thursday, believe it or not, it's only three days, but I'm of the opinion right now that I owe you all an apology because at the time this thing first came out, and I was new to city council, and when we voted back on there, I was under the impression vaping tended to be more like water vapor. And I'm thinking in terms of humidity. And I may have done you a disservice by voting to allow it in the past. And for that, I take ownership. But I don't know which way I'm going to go on this right now. I need to see more facts and that's part of why we're here tonight. But you have got my attention. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number one. This is youth vaping tobacco use overview. And Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation?
Yeah, Marion Chilling will do some introductions of our guests.
Good evening. At the request of Councilmember Weaver, Hoppy, and also Mayor Starker, tonight we have Kain Nguyen, who is here from Jefferson County Public Health, and she'll be providing an overview of youth tobacco use and vaping. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again. My name is Kain Nguyen. I am a tobacco prevention specialist with the local health department. So I am here today to just provide you, as requested, with an overview of the data and trends, what we've been seeing locally, county, state, national level around youth tobacco use, why the public health discipline considers these trends and movements to be an issue and a problem, and what the CDC and public health research recommendations are around strategies to reduce youth tobacco use. First, I just want to say that even though the requested topic is around youth vaping specifically, I just want to make sure that you are thinking about this in this larger frame of tobacco use because when we talk about vaping or e-cigarettes, they are classified as tobacco products. And so don't forget that cigarettes, smokeless tobacco, little cigars are still harmful, they're still being marketed to young people and young people are still using them. So keep that in mind. And so overall, tobacco is still the number one cause of preventable death and disease in our state and country. A lot of people forget that because we've made a lot of gains and strides in lowering the use numbers, but the fact is that enough people are still using it and the immense harm that it causes is still enough that it is the number one cause of preventable death and disease still. So this has been gaining a lot of traction. Last fall, the Board of Health declared youth vaping a public health crisis and there's a lot of media attention on it over the last couple of years. This article from a local paper is just a shot from Lakewood High School, but to make it more local, CPR did a piece on youth vaping and visited Wheat Ridge High School just a few weeks ago. And so actually, Rhonda, I think, mentioned Jim Lynch, and this is actually the student, Jim Lynch. And I'm sure you can't read it, but the caption says, "Wheat Ridge High School student Jim Lynch said he got severely addicted to e-cigarettes, vaping one Juul pod per day, the equivalent of a pack of cigarettes. He was able to quit with the support of his dad and a school nurse, but did so and described the nicotine withdrawal as brutal and horrendous." So it is, it's a very local issue as well. So why all the media attention and why the resolution to make it a public health crisis? Some of the public comment already did my job and gave you some stats, but you know, in 2017, the Health Kids Colorado survey, which looks at middle and high school students in our state and asks them about various different behaviors, and Colorado, Jefferson County youth are using at very, very high rates. About a third of our county's youth are current users of some form of tobacco, most of that is e-cigarettes. And we think that the numbers are likely higher now since the survey was done almost three years ago now and we've seen a steady increase. Even Wheat Ridge's school dean says that kids coming from middle school have already started. That's what he's seeing, that's what they're seeing. So what are some of the reasons that we're seeing this epidemic among our youth? First of all, the, oops, the products are marketed towards young people very intentionally by very skilled people. They're discreet, so you can use them anywhere, even in the bathroom, in the back of class if you're really bold and you're able to hide some of that, the cloud that comes from it. So that's a change from cigarettes, right? That's really leading to addiction because you're able to use it more often. With a cigarette, you really have to find a way to get outside, get out into a parking lot or to the car or something, but this way, you're able to dose yourself a lot more often, so the likelihood of getting more addicted is higher and it's also a lot harder for teachers to detect. They're accessible. So this is, you know, a common picture of a typical convenience store or gas station. These nicotine tobacco products are literally placed next to candy, advertisements are placed at eye level of children, and they're very appealing, right? They come in cotton They come in cotton candy, strawberry, shortcake, unicorn, barf, you name it, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of flavors. No, that is a real flavor. Yeah. So the flavors and the packaging are clearly intentionally marketed towards young people, because the research shows that most people who become smokers, become tobacco users, start before the age of 18, about 90% before 18, 95% before 21. And so that's the market that the companies have to target to get business. And the retail setting in particular is a major avenue that the industry uses to market. With cigarettes and some of the more traditional forms of tobacco, there are regulations now that they can't, you know, advertise on TV and things like that. And so the retail setting is where they have retailers place products in a certain place, ads in a certain place, discounts, et cetera, flavors, and that's the way to hook young people. And the CDC and the Surgeon General have done a lot of research around how much kids are seeing these products and seeing advertisements and the correlation to them initiating use, right? So just a little bit more about what these products look like. They're very sleek and appeal to young, tech-savvy people. They're also, it's a very popular thing to modify them and try to innovate and do new things. So you get a lot of innovation both from the industry and the companies, but you get a lot of innovation from the consumer side, too. A lot of young people are really great and smart, and, you know, you can hide them in Altoids boxes and key fobs and your hoodies and things like that, and you can vape out of your hoodie string. But I wanted to really quick point out, the bottom left is the Juul. That looks like a flash drive. It's about the size of a long flash drive, and it charges by USB, and it also tracks usage data. But the Juul has about, I don't know, probably 80% of the market share of e-cigarettes. It's by far the most popular product by young people, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But they have been found to market towards young people. They use Instagram influencers. They pay young people, people who look young, people who are clearly not, you know, well into adulthood, to model the behavior and spread awareness. And I should say that the owners of Marlboro, so Big Tobacco, has a 35% stake in Juul. So we're talking about the industry. Let's see. Okay, so just as an additional comment about why these increased numbers of use are a possible concern for our communities, another growing area of concern is the effect on the environment. We know that cigarette butts have always been an environmental concern, you know, the litter from cigarettes. Cigarette butts are the number one littered item across the world, and they really take a long time to break down. But think about all the chemicals we know are in those, right? And that's just leaching into the soil and the water, and people aren't very good about disposing of them properly. And similarly, electronic smoking devices, I'm sorry, you see ESDs up there? That stands for electronic smoking devices. It's just one in many terms, vape devices, e-cigarettes, ESDs. You'll hear a lot of things, but we're really referring to the same thing. They are also similarly a fire risk, like cigarette butts. We have seen explosions. Planes have banned them from the hold. Parks have banned them because actual fires have started. But we also know that the devices themselves are both e-waste because of the electronic components, the lithium batteries, as well as hazardous waste because of the nicotine juice. I mean, even hospitals that use nicotine patches and gum dispose of those as biohazards, because nicotine is an acute P-listed hazardous waste. But right now, they're just, you know, you can see them in parking lots and parks. And this picture is actually from Wheat Ridge High School's, a small selection of their confiscated products. And I put that there because, you know, we work in those schools, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But there isn't a lot of knowledge or guidance around safely handling, storing, disposing of these items. So our school staff are taking them at risk and expense to themselves. We also know that nicotine poisonings due to contact with some of these e-juices and liquids are an issue. Calls to the Rocky Mountain Poison Center have jumped dramatically in the last few years related to young children or pets ingesting, or even just dermally through their skin absorbing dangerous levels of nicotine. And it doesn't take a lot for a small child or a pet to be poisoned by nicotine. Yeah, similarly, CPR just has this article about how vape pods are a new trash pot problem for our state. Okay, so going back to why increased numbers of young people being addicted to nicotine is a problem. As I mentioned, Juul is the number one product used by youth. I don't know why it's not loading properly. Okay. Well, it was there. One Juul pod contains as much nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes. And a pod is the little one, the little thing that has juice in it that you stick on the end of the longer USB drive, right? I just want to tell a quick story from a principal at one of our county's high schools about a high achieving student who was about to speak at graduation. He was caught in the middle of one of his final exams vaping. The principal asked him, you know what a big deal this exam is? Why would you risk failing, just so you can vape in class? And the student said, I'm sorry, I know it was wrong, but I could not focus. I had to do it. We're seeing really high levels of nicotine withdrawal from teenagers who are using these products, because they're dosing themselves with such high levels of nicotine. In addition to, in addiction, excuse me, in addition to the addiction, which we don't want any young people to become addicted to anything before they, you know, have the ability to make full rational decisions for themselves, right? We're also seeing numerous studies that are showing that youth who vape regularly, who never smoked cigarettes before, are four times as likely to start smoking combustible cigarettes within a year. And so over the last decade or so, we've had really good, steady declines in youth cigarette use, and overall tobacco use because of that. But for the first time in the last couple of years, we've seen overall tobacco use go up for young people, and it's because of e-cigarettes. And because of these studies, I'm afraid that maybe in the next few years, that cigarette decline is starting to look like this and go back up. In addition to the concerns around just nicotine and combustible cigarette use, we know from Healthy Kids Colorado survey data that youth who currently vape are also a lot more likely to currently use marijuana, binge drink, abuse prescription drugs. Now, these numbers are not causal. I want to emphasize that. There are associations from that data. But there are studies out there that show that nicotine can actually help to prime the young brain for addiction and susceptibility to addiction to other products, because it's actually rewiring the brain to need that pleasure, you know, those pleasure sensors activated. The CDC reports that youth nicotine addiction can harm the developing brain by impacting learning, memory, and attention. And then in addition to vaping nicotine, a lot of these devices are designed to also allow you to vape marijuana and other drugs. And so marijuana is the most commonly one that it's used outside of nicotine, but it's to the point where, you know, Wheat Ridge High School says that they have to test vape devices that are confiscated from their students to see if it's just nicotine, which has a consequence, marijuana, which has a probably more severe consequence, or other drugs. So it's just hard to know, and it's very hard to detect the difference. And then talking about what a lot of people call the vapor. So we actually refer to what gets exhaled as aerosol rather than vapor, because of that misconception that it's just water vapor. It's actually an aerosol, because it contains fine and ultrafine particles that are more commonly found in other aerosols. So they, the vapor in, or the aerosol, excuse me, in these products may contain heavy metals like nickel, tin, lead, flavoring chemicals. So there are a lot of flavoring chemicals that you might recognize in food, but have not been approved for inhalation into your lung and can really damage the lung linings, as well as cancer-causing chemicals such as benzene. And then, of course, being near someone who uses these products can expose you to the aerosol as well. Yes, so just wanted to dispel the myth that it's harmless water vapor. This is from the CDC. So I just told you about what we're seeing in our county and state around youth tobacco and vape use, and also why we consider it to be alarming. I want to now transition into what the recommended strategies are that we receive from the CDC, from the State Health Department, from the Surgeon General, about proven strategies to reduce youth initiation and use of tobacco. And the short answer is that it requires a comprehensive approach. I know that a lot of that is really small. I will just say that, starting from the right, we have community education, right? So we do training and education with select healthcare providers, so that they can screen and intervene. We do community events to try to educate the public. We offer trainings to parents to help parents and community members recognize these products, the dangers, and hopefully how they can intervene and talk to their children and the young people in their lives about it. There is also our partnerships, youth education and prevention, so our partnerships with the schools. So we work with the school district, as well as a number of schools in the buildings, to provide staff trainings to help with running some groups in select schools with students to raise awareness and have students be empowered to, you know, work with their peers around the issue. So that's some of the work that we do around education, as well as school partnerships and provider partnerships. But another, one of the biggest buckets that's recommended as a strategy is policy. And we at the local health department, we don't pass our own policies, but because the research behind policy is so strong, we felt it important to have someone in my position, just to help organizations and communities that want to approach youth prevention through policy. And so I'm going to spend the rest of our time talking about the recommended policies. Oh. This is just a quick overview of the schoolwork and education, which I've already described. Mass media, yeah. Okay, so policy. A big piece of the overall comprehensive strategy puzzle is policy. And the youth access policies, in particular, have been shown to be very effective in reducing youth initiation, which is why communities across the country and state have adopted policies. I'll talk a little bit more about other state, specific state numbers and national numbers later, but this is just a quick visual snapshot of our county. And the policies that I was asked to present about today are tobacco retailer licensing with a provision of raising the legal sale age to 21. And that would be nested under this general category called youth access policy, right? And so this just shows what other communities, home rule communities in our county have done. So Edgewater has full tobacco retailer licensing, including minimum legal sale age of 21. The cities of Golden and Lakewood have some form of retailer licensing only. We have had requests about more information about updating policies from a number of community members. So I imagine the conversations will keep going. Arvada doesn't have anything like licensing right now, but they do restrict minor entry into tobacco businesses, for example. A lot of other communities are actively discussing and considering this, and we'll talk a little bit more about it as we get into the policies. So why look at youth access policy? We know that the retail setting is one major avenue through which young people access tobacco products. So even though it's illegal to sell tobacco to minors, to children under 18, which is the current age right now, two out of three Colorado youth said that they were successful at attempting. So I want to say that these are youth who actually tried to purchase tobacco. They said they were successful. So it's probably a smaller number who have actually tried. We're not saying that two-thirds of youth can buy it, but two-thirds of the youth who have tried and answered said that they were successful. And most students say that, yeah, it's quite easy to get it if I want it. The university has done a lot of research around violations of sales to minors, and they estimate that in our state, about a quarter of the time, retailers are actually selling to minors illegally. And teenage store clerks kind of contribute to that. It's really hard to say no to your peers. If you're a 16-year-old part-time store clerk and your friend or classmate comes in, it's very hard to not sell to them, right? So we're just going to dig a little bit deeper into policy. As I mentioned, federal and state laws say that it is illegal to sell tobacco to those under 18. So why, why is the reality that students are still saying it's very easy to get, that students are still able to access it, that retailers are still, some retailers, in some cases, are still selling to young people? It's because these higher-level laws don't have provisions and penalties in place that actually discourage retailer compliance, or actually encourage retailer compliance, right? Retailers in our state, which is one of actually very, very few in the country that don't have a statewide license requirement for retailers, there's no license. So we don't actually have a reliable or accurate list or number of retailers who are selling products. Sometimes the tire shop could be selling some cigarettes, you know, a tailor could be doing it. And so young people know where to go, if they know that someone's willing to sell. The penalties when retailers are caught by FDA or DOR inspectors are not meaningful. So if it's a warning letter or a very small fine, it's not enough to actually discourage retailers, because the profit and the revenue is much higher. They're not being checked very often at all, just because of the capacity of the state and federal agents who have very, very large areas to cover. They're not being checked as much. And these higher-level laws plainly say you can't sell to minors. A lot of the provisions that make retailer licensing effective aren't included in those, such as making sure that all products require a clerk's assistance, right? Making sure that all products are behind the counter, just like cigarettes. Right now, you know, you can have Juuls or e-cigarettes right on the counter next to the candy, for example, and that really increases access. So tobacco retailer licensing is what we call an umbrella ordinance. It's, it puts an infrastructure into place where you can require anyone doing business in your community who wants to sell tobacco products to obtain a license, similar to alcohol or marijuana or any number of other types. or marijuana, or any number of other types of licenses out there. And violations of various tobacco laws can be enforced under this umbrella. So, you can have a licensing policy and raise the age of sale to 21 under that policy, require that clerks be 18, ban flavors, prohibit licenses within 500 or 1,000 feet of schools, make sure products are behind the counter. Any of those provisions that are common parts of licensing are just under that umbrella, and violations of those are enforced under that one ordinance. So, it's not a bunch of different ordinances. It's one ordinance with multiple policies and regulations, right? And the content of that is obviously up to you to decide for your community, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood the structure, that retailer licensing is kind of the base upon which you build. And similar to other types of licenses, when a business applies and purchases a license fee to sell tobacco, that fee should be set to adequately cover administering the license, educating retailers, and conducting local enforcement, all right? So, compliance checks involving underage decoys, but not for anything more, right? Like, you shouldn't set a ridiculous fee that would cover anything outside of just the administration of enforcing that law. That's usually the practice. So, this policy has been shown in many communities to prevent legal sales to minors, to improve compliance checks...compliance rates, reduce accessibility and visibility of the products when they include those provisions like moving all products behind the counter, requiring any clerk selling or stocking to be 18, for example, similar to alcohol. It includes a small annual fee, no other financial burden for just the basic retailer licensing. And most importantly, it allows for local enforcement, which is the key to a successful retailer licensing policy. So, 12 Colorado communities have retailer licensing laws in place. They are listed there, but this number is increasing. I usually have to check the news about every week because we're seeing more communities at this. And Denver, Boulder, Glenwood Springs, a number of communities are actively...have them on council agendas with ordinances to be voted on. I've mentioned that they are effective, and I just want to give a little bit more information. So, a very recent study in the American Medical Association Pediatrics Journal just from this year saw that communities with strong TRL ordinances had lower odds of youth ever initiating and past 30-day use, so kind of more recent-current use for both cigarettes and e-cigarettes. And I'm sorry you can't see this, but it should be in your packet, is a list of local municipalities in California who passed TRL, and you can see their sales to minors violation rates before passage of the ordinance compared to after, and some of the numbers are pretty Last spring, the National Research Center conducted a household survey in Jefferson, Clear Creek, and Gilpin Counties, and the survey from Wheat Ridge-specific residents showed pretty high support for retailer licensing, 72% support requiring retailers to have a license to sell tobacco. It's really interesting that 77% think that retailers are already required to have a license to sell tobacco, when this is not the case. Moving on to the other topic I was asked to present about is the minimum legal age of sale. When I say T21, I'm referring to Tobacco 21, which is the initiative to raise that age to 21. The retailer setting is one major access point for young people, but another one is social sources, right? So, there are lots of 18-year-olds who are still in high school and can supply to their peers. The reason that Tobacco 21 is supported by the research is that it really takes those legal social sources out of the social circles of teenagers, of high school students. We also know that just the likelihood of addiction, if one starts before that age, is very, very high. If you can get into your 20s without ever trying or starting using tobacco, you likely never will become addicted to it, at least. There's been research around the financial impact for retailers of removing that 18- to 20-year-old market, and it was found that even though they might supply to their peers, the share of revenue in this age bracket is actually very, very small, only about 2% because it's just a fraction of the total adult consumer base of tobacco purchasers, as well as the volume that people tend to be smoking, young versus a lifelong smoker, right? So, the immediate retail revenue impact is rather low. We've already talked about the young brain being vulnerable to addiction, so I won't spend too much time there. 18 whole states have already raised the age of sale to 21. It says here, six communities in Colorado. It's now seven. This is one of those numbers that gets updated weekly, and we just sent this presentation on Thursday or Friday, and the number has already gone up to seven. That's Edgewater, Glenwood Springs, Avon, Aspen, Basalt, Carbondale, Snowmass. Denver and Boulder are voting on it soon. And the Institute of Medicine concluded that raising the minimum legal sale age made a significant impact on decreasing tobacco initiation, especially among 15 to 17...or 15 to 17-year-olds. And this is just some additional, excuse me, data around the effectiveness of reducing youth initiation and use in other communities that have passed this policy much longer ago. Some of these communities passed it a decade ago. So, in summary, local policy is one of the strongest, most effective ways to reduce youth tobacco use. It's part of a comprehensive approach. It's...I recognize that it's not a magic bullet by itself, but it's an important component. We have a role in public health, and we work on community education, public education, youth training, parent training, teacher and staff training. But the fact of the matter is that our...those interventions are kind of short-term or quick fixes, and so, the reason a lot of the research has been done around local policy is because those are the ones that have the highest impact and are more sustainable. Yeah, so, these are some of the common components of a tobacco retailer licensing done at the local level. This is the last slide. So, require all retailers to obtain a license to sell tobacco products, require all products to be behind the counter, require clerks handling and selling to be the minimum legal sale age. In some cases, that's 18; in some cases, that's 21. No tobacco retailers right around schools, so within a small distance to schools. Raising the minimum legal sale age to 21, considering things like flavor bans, any number of other provisions that could fall under it, and most importantly, fund strong local enforcement with meaningful penalties for violations. These are the components of what the research has shown to be the most effective policies to reduce youth use. That's all I had for you. I think I'm going to...
Well, thank you very...thank you very much, Ms. Namba. Why don't we open this up for questions? Ms. Weber?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Always forgetting, either leaving it on or not turning it on. I was just blown away by the statistics when I started learning about this, and I feel very strongly about both the 21, the T21, and the licensing. And I just, in some of my research and asking questions, there were a few things that I would love for you to also talk about. And one of the things, because I think when we think about licensing, it's the...what's the burden on the business owner, all of these different things? And I was just blown away by how much money is made off of these products in a week at a gas station. Could you talk about what these products cost and how much retailers are making versus understanding a commensurate level for a license fee versus the benefit of what they're...does that make sense? And then, I had a couple more questions.
Yeah, so, a pack of cigarettes in Colorado ranges, but it is around the $5 mark, $5, $6 mark. The electronic devices have a really big range because there are so many different products, so many different companies that make them. But I'll speak to Juul because it's the most popular product among young people. A couple of years ago, when they were first becoming popular, a starter pack was about $60, excuse me, so pretty expensive. That came with the main device and a few pods with nicotine in them. And then, a pack of four pods, refill pods, was about $15 to $20, maybe $20. That's kind of why we started seeing these products in more middle and upper-middle-class communities and families because they were kind of pricey, so the young people had to have some disposable income. There's been a lot of discounting, price dropping, massive discounting of a starter pack, and now, we're seeing that some of these starter packs can go for $30, some of the four packs can go for under $15. It varies a lot within the retailers. But looking at the 2018 special issue of the National Association of Convenience Stores, State of the Industry Summit, so this comes straight from the Convenience Store Association, cigarettes and other tobacco products, sales dollars, $55,000 a month average, profit about $10,000 a month, so pretty high for the average convenience store. I'm not in a, you know, business manager or economist, but that's a pretty large number.
And how many pods does a...an average person...yeah?
Yeah.
Because you said a pod is equal to a pack of cigarettes.
Roughly the amount of nicotine in a pack of cigarettes. It really varies because the Juul is always ready to use. It doesn't have to be, you know, ignited, or lit, or turned on like some of the older generation ones. It's ready to use at any time. Some of the more addicted students have told us that they're going through a pot or two a day. I know.
Thank you so much. I...I will be supporting several levels of this for lots of reasons, but also, in my own experience of teaching at the university, it's just all over the place, and it is very discreet, and I don't see any recognition of the dangers of it like at least we learned about smoking. And so, I'll be supporting this because I think we've already seen this story in our society, so we know what we should do. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to licensing, one of the concerns I have is that, as we look at those that are not licensed or not choosing to be compliant, in that instance, when someone is choosing not to participate in the regulatory scheme, then we find them for not participating in that or saying they can't get a license. It's sort of...this seems to be one of a very limited scope as it relates to trying to deal with this because you have the black market, you have online sales, you have social sales, you have proxy sales. But we're dealing with here, those retailers that choose to be licensed and choose to fly above the radar, but...so, how does this sort of deal with all those other aspects? That's my main concern, is that we're just choosing this one aspect.
Sure. First, when we survey high school students, they are still saying that most of the time they're getting it from a brick-and-mortar store. Because even though there are ways to get it online or from other sources, there are more hoops to jump through. It's not accessible by as many young people. So, this is still one of the most common avenues of getting it, and you're right, this won't just eliminate the problem. It is one major avenue for it. There is simultaneously other entities who have more control over things like online sales, internet sales, are looking at better ways to authenticate and, you know, restrict and make sure that only people of age are able to access it through that source. As far as whether local businesses or retailers choose to, I guess, become licensed, that I can't really speak to that. That is up to how each community kind of enforces its code, right? Because if your code requires that you have a local business license to operate, or a local alcohol license to sell alcohol, and a business is reported or found to be in violation, you know, each community has its own way of dealing with that kind of non-compliance with the code. There isn't one answer, you know?
Sure. And I guess with respect to the state of Colorado and the Department of Revenue, they have a process for violations of the state law regarding sales to minors. And do we have any information on the numbers of violations that have occurred within the city of Wheat Ridge or other types of current proceedings relative to this issue that we can point to to say we've had X number of violations go up or go down, or what that looks like?
Sure. So, I want to preface it with, because there's no licensing requirement, even at the state level, the state doesn't have an accurate list of retailers. So, they actually tell us and recognize that they don't really know everyone who's doing it. They try to...they try to be as accurate as possible because on their end, they want to be collecting the taxes, right? For anyone who's selling these products, because there's an excise tax on it. But we also know that their capacity to do checks is far below what researchers recommend to actually catch violations. When I was sent violation data from the DOR, which anyone can access, we can...you can submit data requests to them, there were very, very few checks conducted in our county in a given year. And oftentimes, when a retailer is caught selling, it's either a warning letter or a $200 fine, which a lot of retailers don't care much about.
So, to that end, how is the city of Wheat Ridge expected to do this better than the state of Colorado as it relates to both enforcement and continued compliance? Because at some point, our response is going to be a warning letter and a $200 fine of that retailer, or some other metric of a violation, or some spreadsheet of violations. So, that's my concern, is how do you go and enforce that?
Yeah, so, it's obviously up to you to write the ordinance however you feel appropriate. The model ordinance, the ordinances that have been evaluated to be effective, do not allow for warnings or small fines. So, there needs to be adequate communication and education for retailers so that they know that this is happening, and they know that they will be checked and held accountable. But those model ordinances, the penalty structure is first offense, for example, first offense, seven-day suspension, and then, second, third, fourth, something like that would be revocation of license. So, losing the ability to sell, similar to other types of licenses. And so, the fear, I guess, of losing the revenue is usually what gets retailers... And so, the fear, I guess, of losing the revenue is usually what gets retailers up to compliance.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. This is kind of for Patrick, and I'm not sure how to ask this, but I, well, first off, I guess to you, you know, I saw one of your deals here was to require clerks to be 18. As a kid who went to work at 16, I'd hate to have lost my job because all of a sudden, the outfit I worked for was, you know, selling tobacco products. And I'm not, I'm just saying, we need to make sure that whatever we do targets the problem and not the collateral damage. In this licensing deal, for instance, let me just take a grocery store, for instance, Patrick, how many licenses do they have to have right now? And how do we, I mean, now especially that we have beer sales and liquor sales in grocery stores. How would we approach that from an administrative standpoint, if you have an idea?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, any business in Wheat Ridge today, if they're a retail business or not, if they're in any sort of business operation, they have to have a business license. And, you know, we have probably 45,000 active business licenses in Wheat Ridge. And if they choose to sell liquor, they have to have a liquor license also. But, those are really the only two. So, this would be a third license that they would have to apply for. Our licensing is done out of the Administrative Services Department, except for liquor is done out of the City Clerk's Office. So, you know, I anticipate if we, if you guys move forward with some type of licensing program, we would try to simplify it as much as possible, that when a business comes in, if they're selling cigarettes, retail goods, and liquor, it would, you know, liquor would have to be separate because it goes to a separate board. But, we could combine the tobacco onto a regular business license. It could be just, you selling tobacco, yes, and then this is, you have to follow these items too.
And I know we're home ruled and all that, but if we, to your knowledge, and I know this is new territory, but if the state law is 18 for tobacco sales, can we be more restrictive and go to 21 without running afoul of that?
Yes. They just passed legislation that allows local governments to implement that.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Mr. Keder?
So, just to follow up on that, Edgewater, just, it was either March or May, did both licensing and 21, which I only found out walking into the gas station at 20th and DePew that had the sign up saying, that was the first I heard of it. But, that also speaks to, looking at all this, it seems that it has to be a regional approach to a problem. And so, we have Lakewood, Edgewater, Golden already moving and adopting some of these regulations. And if we're just Denver and Arvada away from Wheat Ridge suddenly being the place where the kids go because they know they can get cigarettes and vaping supplies, and so whether that wants to be the thing that we're famous for in the broader community is, I think, another factor to consider in all this.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for coming and giving us this very comprehensive information about the youth vaping and tobacco use. Also, the information that we got in our packet. So, for those of you out there, if you'd like to look up our packet online, there is some really good stuff in there, too. So, I definitely feel supportive of licensing. And until Councilmember Keder just brought up a really good point, I wasn't quite sure about the age 21 yet. But, I do think that, I don't think that this is something that tonight I could make a consensus to move forward with all of this. I feel like we probably need to bring back, you know, what does Lakewood and Edgewater's ordinances look like? And look at the ordinances a little more, you know, with a little more of a microphone, or a microscope, so that we can move forward with what we feel like would fit for our community. But, so, for me, tonight, I can support moving forward, spending more time on this. And, you know, and in the meantime, we'll see what's happening around us also.
Mr. Matthews, and then Mr. Urban?
Thank you. I'm just going to say, that's where I was headed, is what does staff looking for from us tonight? You know, for some kind of a consensus, because it's not really clear in our agenda package. And I would be in favor of, if staff is kind of ready to bring forward something preliminary, you know, to allow them to do that, and I was going to ask Mr. Goff if you'd had any discussions in the background and knew where staff was leaning towards going. Because I don't know, I wouldn't know how to do a consensus right now, other than to say, bring us more information on how we can do this, in our particular city.
Yeah, since this was really the first time you've been seeing this in front of you, we didn't want to provide specific recommendations, we wanted to get the information out. And I think a general consensus of what Ms. Hoppe just said, to bring back maybe some draft ordinances, and maybe examples for what other cities are doing on the age and the licensing program, what they actually put in their licensing program, I think would be a good next step.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, as much as I want to look at these particular provisions in the research that I've read, it's the enforcement. And so, to Councilmember Keder's point, if I want Wheat Ridge to be famous for anything, it's enforcing the laws and being, giving us an opportunity to enforce not only what we have, but if we were to come up with a regulatory scheme here and a licensing structure, that has this equal sort of structure on how do we enforce this? How do we ensure that this continues to see compliance? Because in the research that I read, it was that compliance aspect that actually led to that drop in usage, not necessarily modifying a retailer's behavior. It doesn't automatically modify a youth's behavior unless we have that constant compliance with the program. So, I'd like to make a consensus that we move forward with looking at an ordinance similar to this, as well as understanding how we can have a robust compliance section as well.
Is there a consensus?
Licensing and age.
And age?
Yes.
I'd like to add something.
Go ahead.
I would simply like to add that we also, I think, putting the products behind, like cigarettes are right now, behind the counter, that is right, correct? Yeah, for cigarettes. Because it is, you know, when I've been in the gas stations, it's just right there with the candy. And so, I'd like that to be part of it, if you're amenable to that.
And we can bring forward the, kind of, the whole menu of options, and we can go through them, yes, no, yes, change.
Yep.
Okay. There's a consensus? Is that, it looks like we have unanimous consensus on this? So, does that give you direction?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for a good presentation, and thank you to all of the speakers that we had to speak on this. We will be back in council at some point in the not-too-distant future to have a more review on this issue. So, thank you very much. We will go to now Agenda Item Number Two. This is the...
Delegation. Sorry. Jump in the gun.
This is the delegation of private activity bonds capped to Jefferson County Housing Authority.
Are we ready?
We are ready. Do you have a report on this one?
I do, and we have some guests here. I will introduce it here, and Lori Rosendahl, the Executive Director of Jefferson County Housing Authority is here. And we'll have a presentation, not a presentation, but here for a quick discussion and answering questions. But, just to tee this up, the city gets an annual allocation of private activity bond capacity. It's not a cash check that the city gets, but this year's allocation is $1.7 million. And that can be used to bond for certain types of projects. And what we want, what we're going to hear about tonight is a housing project. Typically, the city has, we've never used the allocation locally. We've always either delegated it to the Colorado Housing Finance Association, or the Metro Mayor's program for Metro Mayor's, what was it, with the Metro Mayor's? The Metro Mayor's caucus. Mortgage, there you go, thank you, revenue bonds. And so, usually, the amount is too small for the city to use it independently without working with another agency. Fortunately, we have, Jefferson County Housing Authority has requested that we delegate our allocation this year for a project they're working on. And I'll just stop there and let Lori come up and give a summary of what their project is.
Sure. So, you guys have in your packets? You have in your packets, just a quick schematic of what a project looks like. It is an existing property in Wheat Ridge that is, it's older, it's not in horrible condition, but it's definitely not in the condition that we would like it to be in. And it's also not providing the safety and amenities for our families that we would like to see. So, we are requesting the private activity bonds and leveraging those with private activity bonds from the county. We will be going before the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. And they always want to see us have a local allocation to leverage their $10 million of private activity bonds. So, we'll be going before them tomorrow to request theirs as well. What this does is this takes an older property. We've worked with Wheat Ridge Police, the Wheat Ridge Police Department, we've had them out, they've looked at our property, they've told us some of the concerns that they've had with the property, including abandoned cars, because it's so open. The parking lot is huge, it's not well-lit, and has been, it's been an issue for the police department, not in terms of a lot of crime there, but chasing people through there, or people leaving cars. It's right off the interstate, so they've seen some of that kind of activity. So, they gave us some ideas on how to minimize the access and create just a safer environment for our families. We also are going to be adding a community room that we, where we can provide services to the families that live there, with a new playground, some community gardens, all of the things that newer developments can offer, we're going to be offering at this development. You have in front of you are, just quick math, I have Julie with me, who's the math person, knows all the math. She is our developer, and she can answer any questions you have regarding the math. But, this property also has some required repairs, or some electrical repairs and those kinds of things that we want to get done. I shouldn't say required, but just repairs that we want to do. So, this total allocation will help us bring it, bring it into, not so much compliance, because it's not out of compliance, but bring it up to this century. I mean, it's a really old property, and it looks old, and we want to make it a little bit nicer. And the other thing this will do is we'll leverage 6 point, I'm sorry, $5.7 million in low-income housing tax credit equity. It helps leverage that money. And it also brings restricted units to Wheat Ridge. So, all of the units would be restricted at 80% of AMI or below.
Do we have questions? Thank you very much. Questions, Representative? Mr. Keder?
Just quick, I thought the memo said 60%.
Well, so, we have the option of going to 80% with income averaging. And I think what, I don't think we've made that decision for sure yet. We need to look at the incomes of the families who are living there. And if we have enough families that justify us doing income averaging, we may do a few 80% units, just so families don't have to move. Is that today? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am in favor of this project, but I do, I'm kind of a fiscal hawk, in a way, but I do like for, sometimes I'll ask questions that I already know the answer to, but I want my constituents out there to know what's going on. And that's 1.7 million, could you give me, just real Cliff Notes of where it comes from? I mean, I don't think the state Capitol's printing it in the basement, but where that money comes from out of that pond, and then it goes to here to the bonds, and then who pays it back, and then where does it go from there?
I'm Julie Stern, the Jefferson County Housing Authority's Director of Development. So, private activity bonds are different from a general obligation bond that you and your constituents might be used to thinking about. With a general obligation bond, that bond is used to finance a project undertaken by the governmental entity that issues the bond. And it's paid back from the tax revenues of that governmental entity. With private activity bonds, the bond is used to finance a private activity undertaken by a private entity. In this case, although we're also a government agency, we're the private entity, we're the developer. They have to be used for a qualified use, and developing affordable housing using low-income housing tax credits is a very common eligible use that these bonds are used for. Instead of the bond issuer being, kind of, putting their credit on the line and being responsible for the repayment of the bonds to the bondholders, it's the revenues from the project that repay the bonds. So, in the case of a low-income housing tax credit project, the bonds are typically purchased directly by a lender, who would be an entity that would lend to other types of affordable housing projects without bonds. And for them, kind of, they would use the proceeds of the bonds to make a loan to the developer, similar to any other multifamily construction project. And they would be repaid by the revenues of the project, again, similar to any other multifamily project. So, all of the risk is with the purchaser, and it's the credit of the developer that repays the bonds. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you for coming in and presenting this to us. And, you know, one of the things that, we had a presentation about affordable housing and kind of the affordable housing crunch, and one of their recommendations was maintaining the current affordable housing that you have. And so, I'm extraordinarily grateful for this project to be in our community. And so, thank you very much, and I do definitely support this.
Thank you. Mr. Keder?
Just a very quick process question. Is this, whatever consensus we come to, is this to bring it before us at council? Or can we actually give the go-ahead today for this happen?
Yeah, we'll have to bring it back. We're on deadline to delegate these private activity bonds. Otherwise, if we don't by a certain date, they get reverted back to the statewide balance, and other folks can apply for those. So, we would have to bring this back on August 26, next Monday. And there would be a resolution and public hearing, and then council would make that decision at that time. Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll preface this by saying that I'm a Commissioner for the Jefferson County Housing Authority, and I appreciate all the hard work that the staff does there to provide for affordable housing across Jefferson County. And I think that this particular project is a great example of the Housing Authority reinvesting in itself and giving us an opportunity to revitalize some of the existing affordable housing that we have, while also doing a tremendous amount of work in other parts of the county. So, I'd like to make a consensus to move this forward and bring it to the August 26 meeting.
Well, you have consensus on there. I have a couple of questions, or at least one, before we do. So, thank you very much, Mr. Urban and councilors. The intention in the renovation of this project is to maintain the existing residents in place?
Absolutely.
And what will be the cost impact to the residents after the renovations are done? Will units be more expensive?
They actually should be more affordable.
Okay.
So, they should be. It will depend on a family's income. So, if the family has an income where they qualify for a 60% unit, and they're in a unit maybe that was, you know, at a 50% rent, they may see a slight increase in their rent. But, it's our commitment to make sure that the increases are small, and if we have to, we do incremental increases.
Thank you. So, we really wouldn't be displacing any residents?
The only people who could be displaced is anybody who is... The only people who could be displaced is anybody who is over the 80% of AMI, if there are folks living there. Right now, we have, we've done some preliminary work and it doesn't appear that there's anybody over 80% and very few over 60. So.
Thank you. I kind of stuck a question in after the consensus, but I can do that. All right.
Just to give you a quick update, this is just the first of several projects we're doing in Wheat Ridge of updating our developments. And just the private activity bonds, I know that you normally give them back to the state, but for us, they are really a tool that we can use to leverage a lot of money to get those projects updated.
Well, thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for the clarity on this. And we will be back in this issue next week. We're going to take about a five-minute break right now. Okay, are we ready? Let's see, one, one, two, three, four, five, six. If we could reconvene and call our meeting back to order, then we will move now to Agenda Item Number Three. This is right-of-way acquisition and eminent domain 101. And I believe, Mr. Westburg, are you going to be your staff presentation?
Yes.
All right.
So we'll talk a little bit when Ms. Weaver quits opening potato chip packages. I'm pretty loud, but I've learned to pause when there's noise. I also have with me tonight Greg Jamison, who's the project manager for the right-of-way team at HDR, who's our consultant. And fun fact, if you go out and look at our plaque out in the lobby on who designed our building, there's three names. The names begin with H, D, and R. And it was actually this firm back when they were just an architectural firm back in 1969, 1970. So this group back in the day designed our building. So done with the fun facts. So we're just going to run through some things really quickly. Our goal tonight is to really just educate council on a couple of things. And then we'll sort of have a conversation at the end, at the end. And whichever way that goes, it goes. And we'll have our goal of educating as many people as we can on what this is, anybody that's watching on TV and also all the folks that are here. So what's already happened concerning right-of-way is that back on January 14th, council took actions, it was two separate actions, to negotiate purchase right-of-way for the Wadsworth Boulevard project and the Ridge Road projects up at the Ward TOD site. One of the things that did not happen is council did not authorize us to use the city's power of eminent domain if we were unable to negotiate an agreement. The other thing that happened was that council authorized the mayor and the city clerk to accept that acquired right-of-way so that that part of the process for us all is a whole lot easier and quicker. The other thing that's happened on the Ward Road projects is that we have successfully, as of last week, successfully negotiated, the Ridge Road negotiations have been completed. On those five properties, we had to negotiate right-of-way. One, we had one hold out that we had a little trouble just finding people, but we found them and were able to negotiate that right. And we've completed that. We've closed on one of those properties. We've got three closings pending and we've got to just get the check cut and do some other things with that fifth property. So what's about to happen, the reason we're here tonight, the reason we picked tonight was that on Wadsworth, we're about to make the initial offers on the two early full acquisitions that we're doing. So Raleigh-Beretos and Midas-Muffler, we're about to make those, I know, I'm sorry. I see, I see a fat lip over there about Raleigh-Beretos. We have to find them a place. We hope to find them a place nearby. So we're about to make those initial offers on those two acquisitions next week is the plan right now. We're waiting on some information back from CDOT to DCP. As we get that, we'll be able to make those initial offers. We've reached out to those folks. With full acquisitions, there's a lot of preliminary work we have to do with those. We've had lots of conversations with them and so far, things are going along pretty well. With the partial acquisitions, which number over 60, I think there's 66 partial acquisitions we have to take. When you widen roadway, you impact pretty much every property on either side the whole way. Those notice of intents will be sent out in early October. We're going to talk more about what NOIs are. And then the initial offers will likely be sent out in January. There's a big lag between those because we've got to get all the appraisals in and all that other stuff's got to be done. On the Ward TOD project, we have three more projects up there that are going to need right-of-way that we've learned as we've gone into design a little farther. The 52nd and Ward intersection, we'll need some right-of-way at the northeast corner. The existing traffic signal equipment is outside of right-of-way and just sitting on private property. And then the Ridge-Ward intersection, RTD actually built a sidewalk back in the day on private property. We're going to remedy that. Plus, we need a little bit of additional property there to take care of that. And then for the Ped Bridge, the Plaza, the Southern Plaza and the Trail project that we've talked about with you recently, we need to get some right-of-way for that. And we hope some of that's just going to be easements, but we do think where the Southern Plaza is, we need to acquire that as right-of-way. So we have a lot of things right-of-way related that are about to happen that we think that the constituents, the folks that are impacted by these things, might be calling their council members or other council members to have conversations about what's going on. And so we just wanted you guys to be as up to speed as possible on what the process is and what all these different terms mean and that kind of thing. So what we're going to talk about tonight is first, we're going to talk about the right-of-way acquisition process itself. We're going to talk about what notice of intents are, what determining just compensation is, and then what the initial offer packets include. We'll talk about the initial offers, the incentive program that we're using on this project that we also used on the Ridge Road project very successfully, what we do with counter offers back from the owners, and then really what final offers and last and final offers are. So that's going to be the part that we're going to talk about first. Greg's going to talk about most of this stuff because he's been doing this for a very long time and is very knowledgeable on these things. The other thing we're going to learn and discuss, and for those of you that already know this stuff, it's just a discussion thing. For those who don't know all this stuff, we hope this is an educational opportunity. We're going to talk about eminent domain 101. It's like that first class you take when you go to school and it's physics 101 or whatever it is. We're going to talk about eminent domain 101. Because this is what most people think of when they hear the word eminent domain. Another word for it is condemnation, which is like absolutely the most negative world word in the world. But it really is just eminent domain. This is what most people think eminent domain is, the government coming in and tearing down houses and doing things against people's wishes. It's really not that. That's not what eminent domain is. So tonight, we're going to talk about what it is and what it isn't. We're going to talk about when it's used and how it's used. And really the how it's used, it's really, eminent domain is just a tool in our toolbox for acquiring right-of-way. We have a lot of tools, like appraisals and other things like that. This is one of the tools that we use. We're going to talk about who pays for what in an eminent domain process and then what council action is necessary during that process. And then finally, what happens if we don't authorize eminent domain and we need to? What happens if we don't acquire the properties that we need to do? And then Greg Jamison is going to take, I put this at the bottom, so remember to stop talking and let Greg start talking. So Greg's going to take it from here and talk about what right-of-way acquisition is.
Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. A little bit about myself, I was, from '95 to 2000, I was Assistant Attorney General representing CDOT in eminent domain actions largely. And then I like to say I'm a recovering attorney because I moved over to the client's side and I was the CDOT right-of-way manager for 15 years for the metropolitan area before moving on to the private side. So I've seen right-of-way acquisition for capital improvement projects from the very beginning all the way to the end, kind of the cradle-to-grave approach. So the two stories that I'm going to tell, the first one is the right-of-way acquisition process and what we go through to try to consensually acquire right-of-way, avoiding the eminent domain process. So the first thing that happens in these projects is a set of right-of-way plans is prepared. Right-of-way plans is separate from engineering design plans. These are plans that show the boundary of all of the ownerships affected and the portion that is going to be acquired. Once that is done and right-of-way acquisition is authorized and we're ready to go, we send notice of intent to acquirers, to the landowners. And what that does is it kind of tells them, it's official, we're starting the acquisition process. Hopefully, we've had conversations with the landowners prior to sending this notice in the, you know, the public involvement as the project is developed. And there's been a lot of that on the Wadsworth project. But this is the first official notice. It's an introduction letter. It's the right-of-way plan sheet that shows what they own and what's being acquired. And then, you know, the legal description of that. And then it advises the landowners of a state statute which creates a right for landowners to go get their own appraisal if the value of the acquisition is more than $5,000. If they get that appraisal and get it to the city within a certain timeframe, 90 days, and it meets certain requirements, then the city has an obligation to pay the reasonable value of that appraisal. The reason for this statute, I believe, is governmental entities that buy right-of-way for capital improvement projects have a lot of valuation expertise. Individual landowners may or may not have that. If they don't, this gives them the opportunity to retain their own expert, their own appraiser so that they're more of an equal party at the bargaining table and then puts a requirement on, you know, the governmental agency to pay the value of that appraisal. So that's the first thing that we do is we send that out. Then a process occurs where the city determines the just compensation and hopefully the landowner's taking advantage of this appraisal right and getting their own appraisal at the same time. This term just compensation is a term that arises from, you know, the Fifth Amendment, which is, you know, the United States Constitution says, "Private property shall not be acquired without payment of just compensation." Just compensation is fair market value of the property acquired plus damages to the remainder, if any. And that damages to the remainder piece is kind of what fleshes out that just compensation. So what the city will do after sending the notice of intent to acquirers, they will have an appraiser, if the value, if the estimated value of the parcels to be acquired is greater than $25,000, they'll have a real estate appraiser who's competent in appraising partial acquisitions, do an appraisal to determine the just compensation value. If the value's less than 25,000, estimated value of the acquisitions is less than 25,000, then the valuation is done by experienced real estate professionals and that would be folks on like our staff. We have a staff appraiser and we have a group of people who have a lot of experience preparing these, we call them value findings. But, I mean, basically you use compared sales, you get to a unit value times the area, that's the fair market value. You see if there's any improvements there, you know, fences and trees, you determine the value of that. That's the base value and then you do an analysis to see if there's any damages to the remainder. And that determines the amount that is going to be offered to the landowners. If federal funds are in the project, then all the right-of-way acquisition needs to comply with a federal statute. It's called the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act. That's a mouthful. It's kind of, the nickname is the Federal Uniform Act. It's a federal law that has a process designed to make sure the landowner's rights are protected and that a transparent process is done in real estate acquisition. And it actually creates relocation rights for people that are displaced from acquisitions. But one of the key pieces of this Uniform Act is if it is, if a acquisition is appraised, it needs to be reviewed by a second qualified appraiser just to make sure that at least fair market value is being offered and that the appraisal has been prepared in compliance with accepted appraisal practices. So on the Wadsworth project... So on the Wadsworth project, if there's any appraisals, they will be reviewed in this capacity and CDOT staff does that appraisal typically. Once the, the valuation process is done, you have a fair market value, the acronym is FMV, and then an offer packet is prepared and presented to the landowner. Let me go back. So the offer packet is, is again, an introduction letter. Here is your official offer. It says, here's what the number is. It says, here's the basis of the number. It's got the, again, the right of way plan sheet showing, you know, the ownership, the portion to be acquired, the legal description, and then a memorandum of agreement or an agreement to be signed if the landowner is going to accept the offers included in the packet so they can see what the terms and conditions of, of the offer are. We always strive to meet face to face with landowners because this really starts the, the negotiation and sit down and explain it to them and answer any questions that they may have to start the negotiation in a positive constructive way. We, we want to do that. Some landowners say, hey, you know, send it to me, give me a PDF and then let me look at it and we'll sit down and meet with them. But we want to get, we want to get face to face with them as soon as possible to make this as user friendly as possible. So let's talk about incentives. Incentive programs is something that a lot of governmental entities that are buying right of way for capital improvements are going to. And it's a situation where you make an offer and you add an additional amount if the offer is accepted within thirty days of the day that you make it. So it's, it's additional money over and above the offer. It's to incentivize purchasing, you know, to, to encourage the landowners to, to, to purchase the property. Incentives were developed and approved by FHWA probably in nineteen ninety-five and one of the central basis of the incentive programs was to minimize the amount of acquisitions that go to condemnation. And FHWA did a bunch of pilot studies and found that that in case, in fact, was the case, that incentives did work in preventing eminent domain. As Mark indicated, we had a incentive program on the Ridge Road project, which was, I think was successful. I mean, we were five out of five in a very short period of time. An incentive program is, is approved for Wadsworth and it's scaled based on the amount of the FMV. You know, if it's like between twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, it'll be a certain percentage. If it goes, you know, twenty-five, fifty to seventy-five, it'll be a lower percentage. So that, that additional amount is there for the landowners to understand that if they sign up quickly, they get this additional amount. And we found that they worked very well. I think the next piece of this is counter offers. Some landowners will propose a counter offer. The city's always willing to listen to and consider any counter offer. What we found in the incentive programs is when they, when they counter, and sometimes they counter over above the FMV and the incentive, they, everybody understands that the clock is ticking and so both parties are motivated to try to, you know, work out an acceptable deal in a reasonable period of time. Counter offers are always dealt with on an ad hoc basis, case by case, looked at, and, and you make a decision as to whether or not they're going to be accepted. But the incentives have been very good to just keep the parties talking and engaged to try to get to a quicker deal. So, most of the time, the negotiation period is going to be approximately eight weeks. In that timeframe, our, our folks will meet with the landowners as many times as they need to, to answer any questions they have. A common situation is the landowners will say, well, what about this with the design? You know, what's happening here? When that happens, we grab somebody from the design team, take them out to meet with the landowners to answer their questions about the design. There's often questions about the appraisals and the valuation. You know, our people are trained to, to have those discussions and explain what the basis of the valuation is and the difference between the two appraisals, if there are any. Provide any additional information that is needed, discuss any concerns. But we want to be responsive and, you know, answer any questions that they have so that we can try to make the negotiation as effective as possible. Our goal is always to get to a consensual deal and to avoid eminent domain. That's where we want to be. And good faith negotiations is, is not only a goal of right of way acquisition, but if you end up in eminent domain, and we'll talk about this in a minute, that's one of the elements that needs to be proven, that you engaged in good faith negotiations to try to get to a consensual deal prior to taking, you know, the, the, the step that you want to avoid, which is eminent domain. If you, if we don't have a consensual deal over the course of about four weeks, and these are just general timeframes, another thing that we'll do is send out a final offer. The final offer says we, we're going to negotiate for two more weeks. If we don't get to an agreement in two weeks, the matter may be referred to eminent domain. So it just puts, it, it, and the goal here is to set a timeline for completing the negotiations and also, you know, you really aren't even supposed to talk, say that word, eminent domain. You're supposed to focus on getting a consensual agreement and that's where all the energy is in the negotiation. If it looks like it's not getting resolved, this is the first time that we're going to bring this term in and say, hey, if we can't get this done, there is this other step that's out there. Then if that's not effective, it's common to send a last and final offer, giving the landowner two more weeks. This offer will say, hey, if we don't get this done in two more weeks, the city will use its eminent domain. And this just kind of puts the, the parties on notice that it's getting a little more serious and it may be heading towards this judicial action. Again, as Mark said, we'll talk about this in a minute. It has a bad connotation, but it's a judicial action really meant to just, when, if the parties can't agree on what the city's going to pay them, we're going to have a disinterest at third party. Tell the city what they're going to pay the landowners. So that's the right of way acquisition process that we go through and we are hopeful that we can get a very high percentage of consensual agreements by doing this. Again, we were a hundred percent on the Ridge Road project, but there's a lot out there and inevitably, there's, there's a couple outliers that you're going to need eminent domain to, to solve. But this is just a point to stop for questions that Mark and I can ask about the acquisition process so far.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council?
Okay, I'll break the ice again. I do have some questions on the, the, the full market value and then also the continuing value. And the, the thing that concerns me is in a lot of places, we're going to end up out of necessity perhaps, but cutting off access to property that they had prior to. And in some cases, we even may be taking, doing enough impact that they're, they're going to have to shut their businesses down. My concern is, and it's going to be messy and I understand that, so I'm not pointing fingers here, but, you know, the rule of thumb is if your business isn't seven years old, it likely never will be. And for these people, some people that get involved in a situation like that where they've spent years building a clientele on the business and we end up having to more or less put them out of business, how do we determine the additional compensation for the damage to the rest of the property to account for the fact that we're basically putting them out of business?
Okay, so we have two full acquisitions in the corridor and that's a, that's a separate process where, you know, we're dealing, on one instance, we're dealing with a landowner on the ownership and we're displacing the business. There is a whole spate of relocation benefits to help the business locate a property to move into and then move into that property and do interior finish and everything that they need. So, we're hoping not to put anybody out of business, I would say. So those are the full acquisitions. On the partial acquisitions, a, a partial acquisition appraisal is an appraiser does a value of the property in the, in the before condition and they do a value of the property in the after condition. And, you know, if there's differences, then that is the damages to the property. But, we're hoping in each of these instances that these properties still remain viable and if, and, and we've looked really hard at this in the pre-planning so that they're, they're, you know, they're still usable properties in the after condition and we aren't putting anybody out of business. Mark, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I could add another thing. With, with regard to access, everyone that has access to Wadsworth today will have access in the future. So the access is definitely changing for a lot, for everybody on the corridor. Most folks have full access to Wadsworth. People can turn right in, right out, they can turn left in, turn left out. For the vast majority of businesses on the corridor, that's going to be changed to a right in, right out access only because of the medians that we're installing in the middle to help control the traffic. And, and having full access on, on a six lane road is just not a, not a viable alternative from a safety standpoint. With regard to the, to the continuous flow intersections, we've got four of those locations where that displaced left turn lane is going to be. One of those is at the corners, which has been designed to accommodate that. So they've got, they've got what, really just one full entrance access onto Wadsworth today. And in the future, when that, that left turn signal gets put in there for that displaced left turn, they'll actually have a signalized left turn access into that, into that shopping center. So, so we think when our project's done, their access improves over what they've got today. Safeway's in a similar situation. They've got a couple of accesses along Wadsworth. And right now, they, they in theory have a right in, right out, left in. They've got a three-quarter movement. I have seen people turn left out of Safeway, you know, late in the evenings and stuff where there's no traffic on Wadsworth. Again, with that displaced left turn signal, that, that, that signal that we're going to be putting in there, they'll actually have a, a protected left to get into Safeway. So we think from the Safeway shopping center standpoint, their access is actually improving. Now Burger King at the corner, right now, they've got an access in that, in that auxiliary lane that's there and so people can turn right in, right out at Burger King, right where Burger King, between Burger King and Boston Market. That'll be limited to a left out access only. So if you want to go to Burger King, you've got to go down to the main Safeway entrance, turn in and then come back. But that's, that's not an unusual situation for fast food restaurants that are on corners of major intersections, that people often have to get into the shopping center and then get back over that corner to, to, to get there. Up at the north end, the, the property on the, on the west side, which is where the Jackson Hewitt Building is, they've got several access points along there, but there's already a median there that restricts people from turning left in or left out for the majority of those, of the access points. And again, at the very far south end of that property, there'll be a signal there that will allow people to turn left into that, right where Deco and Sons Fleet Maintenance is, that will actually give them a protected left to get in. So in our mind, the access to that location is, is also, there's some changes with having fewer access points where you can turn right in, but having that left in is a much bigger deal to us. We think it's a much bigger benefit. And likewise, up where Pet Boys is on that, that east side, up on the north side of Forty-Fourth, it's a similar situation. They've got a couple of access points that they can turn right in and right out, but there's a median there now that prohibits all left turns all the way up to, up to Forty-Fifth or Forty, Forty-Fifth. And with this, with this new design, we'll actually again, have a left turn signal that you can turn on to Forty-Fifth with a protected left arrow. So, so it is, they have to go back on Forty-Fifth and they get in the center from the side, but, but we think having that left turn is a bigger benefit than losing a couple of right ends and having a little, little bit more of a circuitous route to get in there. So, so we don't, we don't, from our thoughts and the traffic engineers looking at it and stuff, we think in some ways, a lot of those accesses are getting improved with the protected left. There are changes with, with having to go a little farther to turn right in, but we don't, we don't think that in and of itself will be a detriment to the business. Now certainly, construction, while things are all torn up, is going to be detrimental to some businesses. If you cater to construction workers, your business might actually go up. But, but we do think there will be some impacts from construction. Maybe, maybe more, more severe temporary impacts from construction, there will be from the long-term impacts once the project's done.
Okay, since you used my name, let's talk about the Hewitt, Hewitt-Jackson or whatever building there. We're taking, I'm assuming we're going to move that curb line back and they don't have much parking or access or, or drive-through there now. So, in essence, we're going to probably kill all their parking in the front of their building. My other concern then is too, is if you're talking about going down two or three stores and, and the same with these other locations, I'm just using this for example, so someone's got to go past them, three stores and then turn in.
Right.
Are we guaranteeing ingress and egress across those other properties so someone can get back up to their office?
Our understanding is that those properties are all under the control of, of, it's a couple of different ownerships, but they're all sort of the same people and they already have access easements across those properties. And as we go through the right of way acquisition process, we'll want to, you know, sort of check on those and ensure that those are in place. For the Pet Boys property, we know that there's access easements, so Bank of the West won't have any direct access to Wadsworth when this is done, but they already have access easements across the Pet Boys and the, the other properties that are there. So that'll be something that we'll be investigating as we go along and, and if we can facilitate people getting access agreements to some of those properties, we're going to do that also.
Okay, and have we resolved the issue up there where we're closing the, the access up at Forty-Eighth?
Forty-Eighth. Yeah, we, we've had our engineers look at it and they think it's very viable to put a right turn exit off of Wads onto, on that right turn driveway, right in only, onto the cigar shop property. They won't be able to turn onto Wadsworth, it's just not safe to get onto Wadsworth that location. But we do think we can add a right turn into that property that'll, and we've talked with the property owner, he says, as long as people can get to me, that's all I care about. Most people when they leave, leave by going through the neighborhood and, and getting back out another way. So we do think we can provide him a right in only for his property and, and that has taken him off the list as a potential full acquisition.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you. When you were discussing the process that is the first thirty days and it includes the incentive, however, on Wadsworth, we're using federal dollars, so there has to be a second appraisal. So will all of that be able to happen within the thirty days or is there a time extension because of that second appraisal trigger?
The way we, the way we always try to time it is we give the notice of intent to acquire and that advises the landowners of the right to get an appraisal. They have ninety days to get the appraisal done. We start our appraisal at that time. The appraisal process, if we're good and lucky, is going to take two to two and a half months. So, and it may take three if, if, on, on a high volume job like this. So we're not, we're getting our appraisal in for appraisal review near the end of the ninety days. If the landowners are going to take advantage of this, right, they're going to submit their appraisal at the same time. And the great thing about that is when both appraisals come in, the appraisal reviewer looks at them both and makes a decision. And there has been some situations where the appraisal reviewer said, hey, the landowner's report is better than the city's and that's the basis of the FMV. But this, this appraisal process will take that timeframe and then when we make the offer with the, the thirty day incentive, the ninety days will have already passed. It's a good question, but that's how that's going to work if it's an appraisal situation.
We don't have any questions at this time.
So we're going to, we're going to talk some more about the other process at the end of this. If we don't, through that good faith negotiations, land on a cooperative agreement with the property, there's, there's some reasons beyond just the property owner doesn't want to sell us the ground or doesn't like our price that we, that has sometimes been used for eminent domain. And we've actually got examples on the two of the city projects that I've done with the city that we've used eminent domain to help the process along. Without, and it didn't have anything to do with the property owner not wanting to sell us the ground or anything else, it's just, there's some things that happen sometimes. So eminent domain one oh one, I'm going to do the first couple of slides and then let Greg take over. Again, it's, it's sometimes it's called condemnation and I just, I really have grown to hate that word in, in recent months. It just has such a negative, your property's condemned. It's just, it sounds awful. It's like it's bad property or something. It's not. It really is, this is what most people think. It's the, the government come down with a big hammer and, and crush on their house because that's what they're going to do. And I know that there were some comments made earlier that, that sort of alluded to that. It's, you know, we're, we're using this as a big hammer to, to beat people into submission and, and it really is just not at all what eminent domain is. It really is just a judicial process. I got on the internet, looked at eminent domain and found some images, they were kind of fun. So it really is just a judicial process. It's not, it's not a, a big hammer that the government uses to make things happen. It's in the Fifth Amendment, it's one of the five parts of the Fifth Amendment that Greg alluded to, it talks about just compensation. And it really is just a process where a neutral third party, so it's not the city, it's not the property owner, it's somebody else that has no the property owner, it's somebody else that has no stake in the game at all, decides what that just compensation should be based on all the factors that have been brought up to that point. And so I think I'm going to, am I doing this one? Oh, I think I'm still doing this one. So, so again, and what it isn't, it isn't the government taking the property. That is, that is not what it is. It's not taking. It's actually, there's, there's stuff in the Fifth Amendment and there's stuff in Colorado State statute that says we are not allowed to take people's property, which would be we just go and take it. We have to acquire the property, and there's processes to go, to go through to do that. And so it really is an acquisition, not a taking of the property. And it really doesn't really decide if the property is going to be acquired or not. That's not what eminent domain does. It doesn't, you know, we, we've reached an impasse at the end and the eminent domain comes and says, we're taking the property. We've really decided to take the property long, long ago. Eminent domain, again, is just the process determines what that fair compensation is. On the Wadsworth project, for instance, we really decided to take the property back in 2009, when the sub让自己 plan was adopted that had 150-foot right-of-way shown on it. That showed that if, for us to widen Wadsworth, according to that sub让自己 plan, we thought we needed 150 feet from, from one end to all the way to the other. We've since, since, because of all the design work we've done, the things we've done, we're not taking 100 feet, 50 feet. In most places, it's 140, some places it's less than 130, in others, it's even less than that. So we've done a lot of work over the last four years that we've been working on this project, and we spent $4 million getting all this work done to, to get the best project we possibly can. As a result of all that work and all the things we've done, the PEL study we've done early, the environmental assessment that's about to be wrapped up with the, with the finding of no significant impact, we hope to get that signed in September, all that work has led us to the property we need to acquire. So we've already, as a part of that process we've gone through, decided which properties need to be acquired. So eminent domain doesn't decide that, it just facilitates us at the very end if we're having issues acquiring that property. So I think this is the part where Greg starts talking again.
Okay, so here's a couple of examples of when eminent domain is used. One is, the term, I, we've got an cooperative landowner here, but I mean, usually these are situations where you just can't get a consensual agreement. The city's at a certain number, the landowners at, at, at another number, and you're unable to bridge that gap. When you can't find a way to get to an agreement as to what the just compensation is going to be made, you know, eminent domain can be used to solve that and to get to a, a number. So if, if we are at an impasse and we turn the matter over to eminent domain, the first thing that the, the attorney handling, the city attorney handling the action is going to do is call the landowner. And when I was at the AG's office, I used to do this as, well, they would give us a file, I'd call the landowner, I'd say, okay, I'm representing, you know, the governmental entity in this, in this action, but I don't want to file this. Is there something that we can do to work this out? And it's amazing how many times just that simple phone call leads to an agreement. If you're at an impasse and unable to agree on a number, if you bring an attorney in, it does change the tone of the negotiation because everybody starts to see that it's going to be a lot more serious. But again, we want to try to avoid eminent domain at all costs. So the first thing that they'll do is make this call, talk to the landowner, you know, tell them who they are and, and what they're going to do. But if, if that leads to getting to a consensual agreement, then you can avoid the eminent domain altogether. If that doesn't work, the attorney's going to go ahead and file the petition and start the process. But in my experience, less than 1% of these go to trial. 99% of these settle somewhere along the way. You know, you file the petition, you set it for an immediate possession hearing, if that happens and you have the valuation trial. These things, most of them settle before the immediate possession hearing, we'll talk about what that is. But very few of these go to trial. I was a right-of-way manager for like 15 years for CDOT. I think we had three valuation trials in that timeframe. It was something that we, we only wanted to use as a last resort. So when is, another example of when eminent domain is used is an unresponsive owner. A lot of times you're buying property from like a large multinational corporation, and it's very difficult to find the right person in the organization who's authorized to do an agreement and is motivated to do that. So, you know, we were dealing with a very large multinational on a, on a recent project, and we were working, it took us a long time to find the right person. It looked like we were getting somewhere, and then all of a sudden, that person disappeared. We didn't have any phone calls, that, you know, they, they went into a shell, and then we tried other avenues and we figured out, you know, two months later, that the person we were dealing with had left, had left the organization and, and, you know, hadn't been replaced. So you'll have situations like that where you're just running out of time because, you know, you don't, you, you can't find the right person. Once we, we had a $200 acquisition from a, a large multinational oil and gas company, $200 temporary easement that we were trying to get, we couldn't get anybody in the organization to respond to us. We filed an eminent domain action. An attorney entered from Houston, he looked at it and he said, oh geez, you know, let's get this done, this is, this is crazy, and they signed up and got it done. Sometimes bringing in a landowner's attorney, they can, they can, you know, work internally in the organization, find the right decision-maker and get the, get to the, get authorized to get the decision done. So that's, that's another example of when eminent domain is used. Absentee owners, these are rare, but we've had situations where we have an owner of record, but we cannot find them. They, they, they're died, we can't find their heirs, or else it's some kind of artificial entity that's gone out of business a long time ago, you can't find shareholders, or, you know, members of an LLC. You know, we look, we check databases, sometimes we hire private detectives, and we've, we've actually had these situations. The only way to get those acquisitions done is to file an eminent domain action. You file a affidavit with the court, says this is everything that we've done to try to find these people. They enter an order authorizing service through publication, so services is, is published in the papers, and then, you know, you, you set your immediate possession hearing and your, your trial, and, and a lot of times, nobody ever shows up. The court conveys the property to the governmental entity, the governmental entity pays the just compensation in the registry, and it kind of sits there for anybody who's, who is ever going to show up. But, I mean, that's the only way to solve situations like, like that. This is another thing that, that we've seen a little bit more lately, which is interesting, is we always negotiate with the landowner, and sometimes we'll get an agreement with the landowner, and then there'll be another interested party. A lot of times, like if it's a commercial property, there'll be a tenant, and so we ask the landowner, once we get an agreement with the landowner, to get consent from the, from the other interested parties. But we've had some situations where we'll get an agreement with the landowner, they'll ask the tenant to sign off on it, the tenant will, will refuse, and we're kind of stuck because those two parties, you know, can't seem to solve their differences, and we don't want to get in the middle of that. So we'll file a condemnation action, we'll pay the money into the, into the registry of the court, and then they'll set an allocation hearing, and the interested parties can talk about how the proceeds need to be divvied up. But those are instances where eminent domain's kind of the only constructive means to, to solve the dispute that the parties may have to the proceeds. So this is just kind of walking through the process. The city attorney prepares a petition and files it and serves it on the parties. The statute allows an immediate possession hearing, which is an expedited hearing within 30 days that the parties are being served. At the immediate possession hearing, the governmental entity needs to prove five things. They need to prove authority to condemn, necessity for, of the property for the project, immediacy that it's needed, good faith negotiations, that's one of the elements that needs to be proved, which is you have tried to get a consensual deal and avoid eminent domain, and then you usually have a valuation expert testify to the value. If the governmental entity proves all of those elements, then the court will enter, it, it may or may not, but hopefully, it would enter a immediate possession order, and that's an order that gives the city possession of the property so it can construct the project. The city has to pay its estimate of just compensation in the registry of the court, making it available to the landowners, but that's the, that's the means of clearing the project for construction. So that's, that's one step in the process. Then the, if you haven't settled by then, then the judge will set the matter for evaluation trial. Again, it's very rare that these cases go to evaluation trial. Evaluation trial is, it's a trial to either a jury or a three-person commission at the landowner's choice. The three-person commission, they need to be property holders in the county, and one of the persons needs to be an attorney, because sometimes you'll just try these cases to the commission outside of the judge, and the attorney makes evidentiary decisions. And basically, these come down to, the city says, puts his appraiser up and says, I think it's worth X. The landowner puts their appraiser up, they say, I think it's worth Y. The disinterested third party says, here's the number, and then that's the number that the city must pay to get the property. So it is a method, if you can't agree upon a price to be paid, it's a method to have a disinterested third party tell both parties what, what they're going to be paid to get If you go all the way to a valuation trial, which again is rare, who pays for what? The city's going to pay for the right-of-way consultant, they're going to pay for their own city attorney's fees. The city's responsible to pay for the cost of exhibits and, and exhibit notebooks, court costs, these things are usually, if they're tried outside of the, of the court, you need an independent court reporter, the city's going to pay that court reporter cost. And then there is a statute that says if the award at the valuation trial is greater than 30% of the last and final offer that the city made, then the city needs to pay the landowner's attorney's fees. If that award is less than 30% of the last and final offer, then the landowner's responsible for paying their own attorney's fees. But as you can tell, this gets very expensive for both the city and expensive for the landowner, and that's why these things settle along the way, because at this point, both parties are spending a lot of money and it's taking a lot of their time, and it's just easier to settle than go all the way to the valuation trial.
So this last part I'm going to do just because it has to do more with city process and stuff. So, so if the last and final offer is not accepted and eminent domain has not been authorized, which is where we stand today, and it has not been authorized yet, then we'll have to come back to council for some action. That'll take two to four weeks to do. I just put timeframes on here because this becomes relevant as we're sort of charging down the path to get to construction. We would brief council about the overall acquisition status, we've, you know, we've, just like I did tonight where I said on Ridge Road, we've closed on one, we've got three that we're waiting on, and the last one's been negotiated. And then we'd, we'd sort of talk about that, you know, which ones are outstanding still. So that can either be done, we could come back and study session and do that as a, as a quick briefing, and then set a, a regular meeting for the public hearing to authorize that eminent domain if we get to that point, or we could just do all of that at one time. That's why it's either two to four weeks to, to have that conversation. And then during that public meeting, if we have to come back to a public meeting to, to request that authorization to start eminent domain, we'd be talking about those specific properties on those outstanding acquisitions. And so that would be, that would be, and then the city attorney would proceed with the eminent domain process. So that's sort of the door that we're in, the city attorney loves doors, and so this, this is the door we're in right now, that, that if, if we end up with something that's not accepted at that last and final offer, we'd have to come back to you with one or two or three or whatever we've got left as far as that eminent domain thing. And some of those could be really, really simple things, is we can't find the guy, or they're not responding and those kind of things. But we could also have some of those cases where we've got someone that, we're here and they're there, and we just can't get in the middle somewhere, and, and, and so, so there we are. So the other, the other place would be if eminent domain, and this, the other two projects that we've done that we had federal funds was the, the Kipling Street project and Taper Street project. On both of those, when we came to council for the right-of-way authorization, they did authorize us to, to go ahead and use eminent domain than we had to. And we got, we actually got very close on, on several properties on both of those projects for a lot of the reasons Greg mentioned. It was, we only had one uncooperative property, and we had, the rest of them were, somebody had died and we couldn't find their heir, and we finally did find their heir, and they were 96 in a nursing home. If we'd missed them by another year, we probably wouldn't have found them. And so there are some cases where we just have to, have to use it to keep things moving as a tool. But if, if it was previously authorized, then it would just take us two weeks. We'd come back to council in a study session, brief council on the overall acquisition status, talk about what the outstanding properties are, why they're still outstanding, and at that point, council could either just let us proceed with eminent domain, or, or we can ask council at that point for consensus to proceed with eminent domain on those parcels. And the city would proceed with eminent domain process. The, the goal of, of sort of getting the authorization early, which is why I came to you in January to ask for it, was that it keeps the council action a little more impersonal, it keeps it less personal. So you guys are just giving us the authority to do eminent domain if we need to, after all those other avenues that Greg talked about are exhausted, in a, in a more generic sense, versus if we wait until we have properties we need to, we need to file a petition on, then it becomes a much more personal thing, both for you and the landowners and everybody else. So again, it's council's decision completely, but we just wanted to have you guys be aware of, of all these things as we, as we get ready to send all these things out. And again, our, our sort of first goal tonight was just educate you on what the right-of-way acquisition process was and what eminent domain was, but, but I'm an opportunist, since we're here, we thought we'd bring this other thing up. So what happens if we don't use eminent domain? If we don't, you know, acquire that, that last property that's a holdout or whatever that is? One option is we just pay that uncooperative property owner. That's, we just meet what their number is and we, and we move on. The, the issue from our standpoint in looking at this is that, you know, some of the folks that we've dealt with really cooperatively might think that's unfair. Well, why are you giving this guy who was, who was not cooperative more money than you gave us? That doesn't seem fair. And really, from our standpoint, I, I take my job really seriously on, on watching the taxpayers' funds and trying to spend the money wisely. If we just give someone 10 or 20 grand more than we think the fair market value is without any other kind of process, in my mind, that, that could be seen as not a good use of taxpayer funds. And it, and it just unnecessarily increases our right-of-way costs over what we think, we think, based on all the experts, not what I think, it's what the team thinks with the experts we've gotten involved think about that. So sort of the other option is that we redesign the project around that outstanding property. We've got someone that just doesn't want to sell us the ground, period, they don't even negotiate with us. Well, that's an option, we could redesign around that project, but there's some real implications to that. It's very likely we're going to have impacts on other properties, because if we avoid one property, we've got to shift things around and do things, we might impact people that we've already done a negotiation on, completed that on, and we've got to go back to them. And again, they say, well, why are you taking more of my ground, just because this guy wasn't willing to deal with you? It's, it's very similar to what's happened at the Lutheran church up, up on, between 45th and 46th. You know, there's a, they were deemed to be a historical property through no fault of their own, they just were deemed that way, and so we had to shift the entire corridor to the west about, you know, 20 feet or so. And so those properties on the west side have already complained about, why are you impacting me so badly? Well, it's because there's a, there's a historic, potentially historic property on the east side. So, so we can't do things in this corridor without impacting someone, and often if we try to avoid impacts in one place, sometimes for historical reasons, if we did it for this, this property owner doesn't want to sell us the ground reason, we're going to probably have even more negative impacts on more people. So the other thing that that happens is we, we delay the project, because if we change what our impacts are, we've got to go back through the environmental process. It won't take the two years it's taken us this time to get through it, but it will take six months to a year to go back through that and reevaluate things. And those delays could jeopardize our federal funding. We've, we've been awarded now, because on August 21st, is that yet? Have we passed August 21st? We have not. On August 21st, Dr. Cog is going to, is going to award another $5 million grant to us. So we've been awarded $30 million in federal funds. If we unnecessarily delay this project, then we can lose those federal funds. And, and that could be seen as, as a negative thing. We've got to redo all the, the work we've done, the delays could jeopardize the funding, and, and we just increase our consultant costs by having to go back and redo that work. So sort of the last thing, the last option, because again, the city attorney likes three doors, is that we abandon and just don't build Wadsworth. And I found this graphic and I thought this was fun. But this, this sort of is, is what happens, you know? If we don't build the Wadsworth in our piece, it's already built to the north of three lanes, it'll eventually get built to the south of three lanes, and we're going to have a choke point here that we already have. It really, it fails to address the public purpose of the project. This project has been a great project, it scored very well on all the federal grant applications, because it's a great project. And really, all the previous work we've done, we've been working on this for four years now, and we spent $4 million of taxpayer dollars to get to where we are today. And if we abandon the project and lose that, we've just, we've thrown all that away. So, the big question, again, this is what people think eminent domain is, and I just want to emphasize again, that this really isn't what eminent domain is. It's not a big hammer we use to beat on people, it's just another tool in the toolbox, when we've sort of exhausted all the other possibilities, to try to keep our project moving towards construction. So, what we want to do now is just ask any questions you have about the eminent domain process, when, how, why, all those kind of things, and we'll just keep the discussion to that, and then we have some follow-up, depending on how that discussion goes.
Mr. Keter.
So, would there be any benefit in terms of timing and efficiency if the pre-authorization was split between, and this is just hypothetical against the wall, where maybe we still have to approve it in the case of uncooperative owners, but in the other categories where it's an inherently less personal discussion, or you can't actually find who the owner is, would it be any value to have that part essentially kind of pre-authorized without the other?
So, it's a new idea. We could certainly, we probably need to talk to the city attorney about that one, to see how specific that right-of-way resolution can be made. To do that, but we can certainly ask, but I probably can't give you that answer tonight.
Additional questions? Mr. Matthews?
I understand, I don't like it, but I understand the need for eminent domain, and I'm not necessarily against having to use it. I am against abdicating our responsibility to authorize it. You know, you've talked about all of the delays and what have you. If at this point in the process, we don't know who the homeowners are, or the landowners are, then that's shame on us, and it becomes a matter of managing when and if we're going to have to go to eminent domain. I don't envision that we're not going to build this project, and I don't doubt that there's a good chance we may have to do eminent domain. The only eminent domain I'm aware of that we've used in the past was over on Sheridan many, 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 many years ago, and I don't remember how that turned out, but I think it's germane for council, if we have to go take an extra step and do an emergency meeting or something to keep the project going on time, then we should be willing to go through that exercise. I think it's germane on staff to be able to try and forecast where we may have problems on right-of-way acquisition in the future, and then let us know, so we can work closely with you, without abdicating our responsibilities. I think we have to go through that process. That's what elected officials are here to do, to manage, and I just don't see, at least from my viewpoint, of giving staff carte blanche to do eminent domain without getting our express validation on that process.
Thank you.
So, eminent domain, let me find my notes here, does not decide whether or not the right-of-way will be acquired. That decision is made during the project development. When the location and the amount of needed right-of-way is determined, the only decision at hand during eminent domain is the just compensation. So, if we say, "Go ahead, you can utilize eminent domain as a tool," that means we're saying, "Go ahead, you can give our citizens an opportunity to have a hearing, and to get just compensation, and to have a third party, an unrelated third party, decide that." We're not saying, "Go ahead, just go walk up and take somebody's house." So, for those reasons, I support giving them the authority to use eminent domain for the right-of-way acquisitions for Wadsworth Boulevard during the widening and the Ward TOD projects, because we don't need to just keep adding red tape, and red tape, and red tape, when this process is really about finding just compensation for our citizens.
Mr. Keter.
So, does not having that authorization ahead of time, does that negatively impact the process beforehand? You've talked about that the idea of the final offer is, you give people numbers, and you say, "If you don't take this, we're going to eminent domain." Does that have a negative impact if you don't at that moment have the authority to actually threaten eminent domain? Do you think it limits what people will do in terms of that pre-process?
And again, I wouldn't, and it's just sort of semantics, but I wouldn't necessarily, it's not really a threat of eminent domain, it's just, hey, we've reached an impasse, we've really tried hard, we both were really firm in our positions, let's let somebody else decide this. So, it really is, that's what we're talking about, and I'm trying to think of the first part of your question, because I remember the last part of your question.
It was whether not having the authority to go forward with it, whether that affects anything.
So, we can plan this, we can manage our project, as Mr. Matthews said, we can certainly, it's germane on us to manage our project well, and we will certainly, if we're getting to that point on a few properties, or one or two, or whatever it is, we're going to come see you at the right time to try to keep the project moving forward. What I've heard from both Greg and the right-of-way consultants we've used on the previous projects, and he can maybe answer this a little better than I can, after I tee it up for him, is that often, when it becomes personal at that point, council will say, or even when he was at CDOT, the transportation board would say, "Well, go try for another month, and then come back and see us." And that will often happen sort of three or four months in a row, and we're still at an impasse. We're not, you know, from the city's position, if we've gotten the point that we think we've got the highest value of that property, that we think we can justify spending taxpayer funds on, we're not that likely to budge on that. And if they're standing firm on their place, they're not likely to budge either, and so, it just, it adds delay to the project without really accomplishing anything. And again, that happens more often when it's a personal thing, and they're up here with you, with me in a public hearing, talking about what's happened and what's going on. Certainly, it's council's decision. We are not trying to tell you to go one way or another as staff, we just want everyone to really be informed on what's happening, what it is, because again, it has this connotation that we're just, we've got a steamroller, and bulldozers are taking down houses and things. So, we just want to inform and let you guys discuss this amongst yourselves, and decide which direction you want us to go.
If I could just add to that point, we had a really strange project recently, where we were purchasing right-of-way in advance of construction funding. They had some, but they didn't have 100%. And there is an eminent domain bar out there that represents landowners, and some of these landowners, you know, are turnied up with these guys. And, you know, we did have these attorneys say, "If you don't have a resolution authorizing condemnation, I'm not going to talk to you." And I mean, a lot of these attorneys are kind of interested in setting this up and getting it into eminent domain, and if, you know, that's not in place, they're going to hold off and see if the governmental entity is really serious about doing it. And then, Mr. Matthews, is that your name, sir? I'm sorry. Yeah, to your point, one thing I wanted to say is, there's been excellent public outreach and involvement with all of the affected landowners on this project, and that's where you want to be, you want to have prior relationships with people, and get their input and get their understanding before you make your offers. And I've seen this much goodwill on a lot of different projects, but when you put the numbers in front of people, then, you know, it becomes a business. And so, we don't know where those numbers are going to fall, we don't know where ours is going to be, and where theirs is going to be, and how that's going to work out. And until we have those numbers, we really don't know. And then, you know, that doesn't make it nasty, but it just, you know, here we are, we've got this bridge, we've got to see if we can circumvent this and find the middle. And it's difficult to say where that's going to be, because you have great relationships with people, but when, once the numbers play out, you know, that really starts a different relationship.
I understand what you're saying there, sir, but it's a little bit like what I said about the vaping. I made a decision, and I had to own it. And I sort of objected to the deal about how we wanted to keep it impersonal, because for the landowner, it's very personal. And I think he has the right to have the expectation that his elected officials take responsibility for helping to, well, for moving the process forward. I just believe that we should be involved in that on a first-come basis, not where we can just come and say, "Well, staff did it, it's not our fault." You know, and that's what I'm trying to get away from. Our people want more involvement, I think, by city council on some of these difficult decisions, and that's what we were hired to do, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to agree with Councilwoman Hoppe, and I'd just like to remind everyone that eminent domain is not a taking, and it's not a threat, and it's not something you do. It's actually a right in the Fifth Amendment, along with due process and some other really important personal rights. So, the right of eminent domain is that right to negotiation, and I just think it's really important to remember that.
Mr. W.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking to the eminent domain process, you mentioned an immediacy element necessary to go forward with eminent domain, and Mark, you'd mentioned the 21st of August being a date that Dr. Cog would notify us of funding. So, in addition to that funding, does that cover our funding gap completely, and how do we know that that funding is coming on the 21st?
So, yeah, that's a great question on our funding. So, I didn't include that today, because we were trying to stay focused on right-of-way stuff, but it's still a great question on where we are with things. We've got, our latest cost estimate, we're still wrapping up and getting done to get down to CDOT and FHWA to review, shows us right in that $45 million neighborhood. With an additional $5 million that's going to be coming from the latest round of transportation funding, that does close our funding gap. So, we do have the gap closed, barring construction costs continuing to go out the roof and those kind of things. We've tried to account for some of that, we still have some contingency, and as we keep moving forward, we're still trying to value engineer things as we go along, to try to make sure that we're using those monies wisely, and we're not going to exceed that $45 million. So, we do think our funding gap is closed. That packet of stuff that Dr. Cog Board is going to be approving, which our mayor sits on, thanks for doing that for us, is going, and I think it's the 21st, it's a Thursday, whatever a Thursday is, the third Thursday in August, is when Dr. Cog will see that. It's been through their regional transportation committee, it's been through their technical advisory committee, they had a public hearing on the funding package that's put together, and so far, it's passed all those hurdles, and so, at this point, it's just a matter of the Board deciding that everything that everybody's done up until now is a great job, and approve it. And they certainly have the right to not approve it, but I don't know of an instant when the Board's not approved something after it's gone through all the process that it's gone through for this kind of thing. So, we feel very, very confident about getting that $5 million, and having our full $45 million in place.
I guess that would be one of my main concerns, as it relates to relinquishing or moving forward with that power of eminent domain, is making sure that there is that immediacy to the project, and that can only come with a full budget without any gap. And so, as much as we expect it to come forward, and it sounds like it'll be announced on the 21st, I'd feel more comfortable, you know, waiting until after we know we have those funding sources at least locked in place, if not in the bank.
And we wouldn't, just because of timing of packets and everything else, we wouldn't be back in front of council asking, with the resolution, asking for that authority to use the city's power of eminent domain until after that Dr. Cog Board meeting. So, you know, we have not done a, because I'm not going to prepare a packet until I talk to you and see if it's something you guys are interested in. So, it would be a meeting sometime in September that we'd be bringing back an authorization, assuming council wants us to do that. So, again, it would be well after that Board meeting, so we would know that funding was in place. And actually, by that time, we might even have our Fonzie, that finding of no significant, that last environmental document signed by then. So, we could certainly, from direction of council, wait until both of those things happen, before we come back to ask that authorization for the eminent domain authority, if that's something council wants. Again, we're very flexible in all of this, we just want to make sure that you guys are fully informed on everything, and we're just waiting for direction for you on what to do.
Mr. Urban, yes?
Thank you. So, to that point, if the Fonzie is issued, and the, I forgot what else I was going to say, that the funding package is in place, at that point, wouldn't we have an understanding of where we are with the need to go down the eminent domain road, or how long until we are at that point?
So, we've got a sort of a lot of moving parts, and maybe I'll just, I'll tee up my next, it just says "next steps," because we're sort of talking about that now, but we've got the Wadsworth right-of-way, and the schedule I mentioned earlier, we have those notice of intents going out next week, which is why, the reason why we wanted to come talk tonight, so you guys know about the acquisition process. We're not going to actually send out those initial offer letters on Wadsworth until January timeframe, is the way the schedule looks right, because this is going to take us several months to get through the appraisal process, for the CDOT's not going to turn around and appraise a fair market value on 66 acquisitions in two weeks. It's going to take them some time to get through it. So, our best guess of the schedule right now is, we don't send out those offer letters till January, but we came tonight because we're about to send out those notice of intents. And then, on the Ward TOD projects, we've got three other really small projects, a couple of intersection projects, and then that bigger project for the trail, that we need to come to you for right-of-way authorization for, to proceed with what the work we're going to do there. And our thought was, if we have this conversation tonight, and council's okay with us having that authority, then in those resolutions, we would package those like we did previously, which is, go acquire right-of-way, and you have the authority to use the city's eminent domain if needed. We'd come back to you with an authorization for the Wadsworth project, asking for that authorization for the eminent domain sort of by itself. So, that's sort of the reason we're here tonight, is we just have a lot of moving parts, and we're trying to be efficient with your time and our time with when we talk to you about things.
Thank you, Ms. Duesman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, while I understand that eminent domain is a negotiation tool, and that we are trying to find just compensation, at the end of the day, no matter what, we're going to be acquiring that property unless we don't have, unless we don't give the authorization to take that property. And so, I'd really like to have that power maintained with an elected body, and while I understand your need for a timely schedule, I'm guessing, since this came back to us after having us already made the decision, that you're expecting to have to use this tool? Is that correct, or?
We would anticipate needing to use it. We've got several large businesses on our project, you know, Pet Boys is a business that's not locally owned, they're out of California. When we've dealt with them in the past, it's been sort of a difficult relationship, because we're just dealing with attorneys that are in California. I'm not going to pick on them in particular, but, you know, there's a chance we might have to use it. And like I said, on the Kipling Street project and Taper project, we had a couple of properties there. On Kipling Street, we had a property where the homeowner died, the daughter couldn't keep up with all the payments, the house went into foreclosure, and so, we were suddenly at the very end of the project, ready to start construction in a few months, faced with a bank that didn't care. And so, we actually filed a petition, we were going to the immediate possession hearing, I wasn't, but the staff was, the consultant staff was, and we were on the courthouse steps making the deal, because that's when the attorney finally showed up, because he had to, and we made a deal with him to do that property. So, it's those other sort of outline things that the eminent domain tool is useful for. It is also useful, not as a hammer, to hold over those, if you will, uncooperative landowners, but it's just, it's a hammer to say, "Hey, we've reached an impasse, let's get to a value that somebody else decides, and that's all we're going to do with that." The really, the only way not to buy the property is just not to do the project, unless we do one of those other options we talked about.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would like to ask for consensus to authorize the use of eminent domain for right-of-way acquisitions for the Wadsworth Boulevard widening and the Ward TOD projects.
Three in favor, three against, so that consensus would not pass. Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Goff worked with me here just a little bit too, because, and I understand what your timeline was, but I'd like to be aware before, if this comes back to council, in order to give staff authorization to say, "Go ahead and do eminent domain," would it be a resolution enough? Does it have to be an ordinance, or just a motion?
It's a resolution.
And there is no hearing, I mean, we don't have time requirements on that, you know, for notice, do we? I mean, it's just, we're just giving instructions to our staff that to proceed with an action.
Correct, yeah. It's, I guess, the timing is just getting it in the next business meeting, and so, that's the timing.
So, it would be a maximum then of two weeks, or unless we just asked for a special, called for a special meeting.
Unless there's a holiday or something, yeah. Or you call a special meeting, yeah, you could.
And just, you know, I guess, I don't want to delay, I mean, I understand construction, and I don't want to delay construction, but it's not exactly like it would be a month-long or two-month process for us to say, "Go ahead in this instance, employ eminent domain, and our blessing."
Yeah, it shouldn't be. We could, if the calendar works, we can get it on the next business meeting.
I mean, we just did a deal in one week. Councilwoman Hoppe asked for money for the businesses. Councilwoman Hoppe asked for money for the Business Association, and within one week it was put on the agenda, discussed, and passed in one week. Hopefully, something as important as this, we could manage to do the same thing just as quickly.
Ms. Hoppe.
Yeah, first off, it's the Wheat Ridge Business District, not the Wheat Ridge Business Association, and that didn't require any staff time to put that together, so that's why it went pretty quickly. But just to point those differences out.
Is there any further discussion? Well, it looks like we did not provide you with a motion to move forward.
We will proceed accordingly. Thank you for your time tonight. And I just, the real big thing is, I really hope that the educational part of this was really useful to folks, to understand what all of the pieces parts are. It's taken me, this is my third federal project, it's taken me three projects to sort of figure this out myself. So we just wanted to make sure you guys understood what we were all doing and what was happening, in case someone calls you and says we're being mean and nasty to them, you can say, well, let me go check into that and I'll figure that out. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much for a good explanation of the process. Okay, we will complete item number three then, and move to item number four. This is Residential One, R1 Zone District Accessory Structures setback.
Thank you. Good evening. Lauren Miklak, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. Tonight, pretty straightforward, talking about setbacks in the Residential One Zone District of our eight straight residential zone districts. R1 is our largest single-family district. With that, it also has the largest minimum setbacks, so it requires a 30-foot front setback and 15-foot side or rear setbacks for any structure, whether it's a house, garage, shed. The last time that we've modified our residential development standards was about 10 years ago, 2009, and at that time, it was a very conscious decision not to change R1. We have heard from a couple residents this evening, and I understand some of you may have heard from property owners, because especially those side and rear setbacks can feel disproportionately impactful to smaller structures such as a shed. To explain some of our jargon that we use, so anything not attached to a home is considered an accessory structure, and we classify them further as minor or major, so based on size and height. So anything that's minor is often a shed or a gazebo or pergola, major is typically a carport or garage. So enclosed in your staff report, we did a comparison of our current residential zone districts. You can see that in most of those, there are different setbacks for minor versus major accessory structures, and often depending on the height. We also looked at neighboring jurisdictions, it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison for zone districts, but the biggest takeaway, I think, from the analysis both of our code and of other communities, is that there's usually a distinction between the smaller and larger accessory structures. So ultimately, the issue at hand tonight is whether there's a consensus to modify those requirements for the 15-foot side and rear setbacks. We could do it for minor, or for major, or for both. I think we proposed one option in the staff report. That's really all I have for opening comments.
Questions? Ms. Dozeman.
Do you have a little bit of background as to why it was a conscious decision not to change the setbacks in R1?
No, not a lot of background, so we looked at old minutes. It was an extensive code amendment at the time, so we looked at a lot of different development standards. And I think it was really considered that, you know, we have a lot of properties that are zoned something and don't really match the minimum size and widths. R1 probably has, there are certainly non-conforming lots in R1, but most R1 lots are a quarter acre and at least 100 feet wide, and I think that was sort of considered to be sort of sacred. You know, we need the space, we want the setback, so there really wasn't a desire to, I think, change what felt like more of an encroachment on people's properties in R1.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have any indication of how many individuals have requested a variance and been denied, or requested a variance and received it in relationship to these setbacks over time?
So we did include a little bit of the variance history, so we don't keep record of how many people ask about it and maybe don't meet the criteria, so they don't pursue. But of the 156 variances in the last 10 years, eight related to R1 side and rear setbacks. Certainly, anecdotally, as you probably hear, we get a lot of folks who are like, what do you mean a 15-foot setback for the shed? So, and then they may resolve it some other way. For a shed, for a minor accessory structure that is 120 square feet or less, you don't need a building permit. So I don't know how many people have sort of at their risk said, I don't need a permit, who's checking? It's hard to know that particular data point, but the variance, I don't think the variances that have been processed maybe accurately depict the number of folks who have inquired or been frustrated or sort of pursued an alternative approach.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you. Anecdotally here, you say several requests have been received to consider this. Do we know for what reasons? What, you know, what are they wanting to build where they're wanting to get closer to the fence? Because I think that's an important consideration, is what, I'm concerned that this may be a precursor to trying to get ADUs started down the road, that's one of my concerns. But what are people requesting to put closer to the fence?
I mean, I couldn't speak to what maybe some of you are hearing that compelled it to get added to the agenda, but I would say, anecdotally, in my nine years, folks have more of a gut reaction to the shed or the gazebo and the smaller structure that feels, I think somebody referenced it in public comment, that it's like floating in the middle of the yard. I think there's certainly more understanding for the homes and the garages that are larger than a 15-foot setback. That's what we see, those need permits, so there's sort of a pattern of those complying with that more uniformly than the smaller structures.
Okay, because my reaction to this is, we already have, I guess, I don't, kind of, anything under 120 square feet doesn't require a building permit, so having walked my neighborhoods, I know there are an awful lot of sheds that are within five feet of the property line. So, I mean, I think besides just height requirements, we need to be talking too about area of the structure itself and use. So, you know, when does a shed become a garage? And these are the kind of issues I think we need to talk about and flesh out more before we do a consensus one way or the other.
By code, a minor accessory structure is 400 square feet or less and 10 feet in height or less. Anything larger than either of those standards goes into the major category.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. Yeah, I actually have had several people contact me about having to put their shed kind of like in the middle of, like where they're, what they want to have is like a seating area in their yard, because there's setbacks in the way their properties are. But I, so I'm wondering if minor, you said, is 400 square feet or less?
Mm-hmm.
And 10 feet or less. And I could, I mean, I could see, you know, 400 square feet is livable amount of space, so like, to Larry's point, like, I'm worried about these becoming ADUs. So what I wonder is, is there some, is there some way that we can just exempt sheds as long as they're under a certain size?
Probably the, maybe I'd recommend the best approach, if you wanted to have a smaller setback for a smaller structure, and still that larger setback for a larger structure, is to change the minimum square foot so that our bucket is smaller of what those miners, so you could say, you know, eight by 10 is 120, maybe we say 200 square feet is a minor accessory structure in R1, and those have a reduced setback. It'd be a little easier for, just sort of the customary way that we communicate with most folks in terms of how we communicate what those thresholds are.
Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, and to that point, I mean, I agree, and to give everybody a visual, a 20 by 20 shed is just about the size of my two-car garage, and I'm trying to figure out why somebody needs a two-car garage in the back, in their backyard. So, I mean, that's the sticking point for me.
The height gets to be usually the limiting factor, so I, the larger minors are usually big gazeboers or big pergolas because of that reason. The bigger the floor plan, the harder it is to stay within the 10-foot height because of the pitch of the roof, and you don't often get, we don't often see flat-roofed accessory structures. Yeah, it's sort of a, it's dynamic.
Ms. Hoppe.
So currently with our, with our R1, whether you're a major or a minor, you're treated exactly the same anyways. And so you said, your suggestion would be that we change the bucket in which we put them in, in the categories we put them in. And so I'm trying to see where that would also become like a major issue, like in a different zoning. Like if we change, if we change the minor, is it just minor for R1, or is it minor for across all of our district, all of our residential zoning, R1, R1A, R1B, R1C?
So each zone district has their own set height and size. R1B minor threshold is at 300 square feet.
Is the definition the same for minor R1B as it is minor R1?
No.
Okay, so it would just be the one definition?
Correct.
Under R1?
Yep. Yeah, what's a little unique about this, when we say definition, the way that we codify it, it's actually a table. So each district gets its own tabular format that says, in this district, here's the maximum size, and so we could just change those numbers. We don't even have to change the definition of what we mean by minor and major, just the square footage number.
But you need a permit for over 120 square feet?
That's correct.
A building permit. Thank you. Additional questions or thoughts on this issue? Ms. Hoppe.
I'd like to ask for consensus to direct staff to change the definition for R1 minor accessory structures there for, there, and in that also being able to change our minimum setback for minors to five feet from 15. Oh, um, do you think 200? 200 square feet? Okay.
So, did you have a square footage in there?
240.
Or two?
200.
200.
I'm just trying to still figure out, if I was going to have a gazebo, why would I want to set it right over next to my owner's property? I mean, I would want it more central to the house.
But you have a shed.
But what am I putting in a shed that requires 400 square feet, or whatever? Or even 200? That's still not a small shed, 10 by 20.
[laughing]
Well, and, but you're a farm. I mean, is someone going to keep goats in it? I don't know. I mean, that's my point, I'm still trying to figure the need. I'm still trying to figure the need to change what we have, because you can have a small place for your lawn mowers and what have you, within 120 square feet that's not floating out in the middle of your yard, but why do you need to build a gazebo or a shed that, what are you housing that requires that much space? That's still a question I'm having a hard time getting away from.
Let us go to, let us go to Ms. Weaver, next.
I feel like somewhere between 200 and 250 is reasonable, because you can't get a car in that.
10 by 20? Shouldn't have.
250 square feet? You get a car in that?
We don't often see them that small, but I think the minimum garage door size is usually 10 feet wide.
No, give one 8 feet.
Okay, 200. I mean, I think the need that was brought up tonight is very real, you know, whether people have lawn mowers, scooters, riding mowers, six inner tubes like I have.
Mr. Keeter.
Just a point of clarification, based on Mr. Matthews' question, my understanding is that a structure that's under 120 square feet also is subject to the 15-foot setback, but because they don't get a building permit, nobody probably goes around to enforce it. So right now, a 120-square-foot structure is not legally permitted to be within 15 feet of the line.
Yes, that's correct.
Who's next?
I'm going to ask for my consensus.
Let's go to Ms. Dozeman, she, or are you?
Yes, I agree.
Are you voting?
Yeah, I definitely think that we should bring our code into compliance with what is the norm and what we're seeing, and if we're already seeing small sheds that are only five feet away from the property line because they don't need to be pulled, have a permit pulled, then, I mean, I think it makes sense, it doesn't make sense in my mind that we have a different set of stipulations specifically for R1, and like, that's kind of how I felt about a lot of the building codes. And, you know, I would like to prevent the government from telling me what to do on my property as much as possible, so I definitely agree with your consensus.
So I'd like to ask for the consensus, and it was, if I can remember it enough to repeat it, ask for the definition in R1 minor accessory structure setback, accessory structures to change to 200 square feet or less, and change this setback to five feet.
I can abstain on consensus, because I'm not, I'd like to just see the final one before I say anything else, so it's not a no, it's just a, I don't know yet.
Well, that generates consensus, Ms. Dozeman.
So are we also going to address the major setback and kind of bring it more in line with something like the R1A or R1C, as far as if it's a certain height?
May I ask, before we go to that question, is there a height component in Ms. Hoppe's?
No.
Well, we were just, we were just talking about minor, minor accessory. I was kidding, Lee, I'm tired.
There is a height requirement, we're just not changing it.
No. Like, as far, as far as the major setback, because, I mean, if we look at many of our other residential zoning areas, it, for me, for the major, it's five feet if less than 10 foot in height and 10 foot, 10 feet, 10 foot of setback, if it's taller.
So based on the consensus, anything over 200 square feet, as it's written now, would be classified as major and would go all the way to the 15-foot setback. So one option would be, you know, if it's, if you're over 200, now you're in the major category. If you're less than 10 feet in height, you could have a 10-foot setback. If you're greater than 10 feet in height, you could have a 15-foot setback. So that's sort of the structure that we have in place right now, that's the threshold that we use of height, and whether you have the moderate or large setback for your larger accessory.
So I guess I was just going to the body, to see if we wanted to just leave that as is, or if we wanted to be more reflective of some of the other residential areas.
Ms. Hoppe.
I guess I would say just because some of those lots are smaller than the R, than the standard R1, that at this point, I haven't done a lot of research on it, but at this point, I feel like they're reasonable where they are.
Does that give you the information that you were looking for?
So we'll proceed, it'll be a very short code amendment, but we will take that to Planning Commission and then to City Council.
Okay, well, thank you very much for bringing this to us tonight. That concludes our business agenda. We'll go to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Yeah, Mr. Matthews asked me for an update on the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company noise issue. I met with them again last Tuesday, and they brought in Barronson Associates, which is an acoustical engineering firm, and they did another study, noise study, to really try to pinpoint exactly where the majority of the noise, increase in noise is going, so that they make sure that they understand what they're trying to mitigate and not build something that's not going to solve the problem. So they have them on board, and they also had the executive board with Miller Coors and, I forgot the other section, that Miller Coors, Coors, Molson, they have so many different names, but there are several different so many different names, but there, there are several different components that, that make up the board. They all came in and met last Wednesday, and they gave direction, green light, to move, continue moving forward, and working with Prax Air. Prax Air is the company that built the, this oxygen unit system that is out there, that is, helps fuel the furnace process in a more kind of environmentally sustainable manner. But that's the piece of machinery that's causing the noise. So Miller, Rocky Mountain Bottling is actually leasing that equipment from this company, Prax Air, which is, the equipment is on Rocky Mountain Bottle Company's site, but they don't own it, they're leasing it. So Prax Air is providing timelines and proposals on how to mitigate the noise, based on that most recent noise study. I asked Rocky Mountain Bottle to send out a letter to all their neighborhoods, to their neighbors, and we're going to get a draft of that letter on Wednesday. It's in their legal department right now, and so I'll share that with all of you. We gave them a list of about a hundred and sixty addresses that surround their plant, so they're going to send that letter to all those different neighbors to explain what's going on, why there's this noise, what they're doing to try to, to fix it, and kind of have a timeline for that. They are, they are trying to work very collaboratively with us, but the biggest issue I think they have right now is since, I think as Mr. Dahl, I think, said to Larry and I, I don't know if he said to the rest of the council, but our current code is pretty squishy on noise. It's not real objective on, on what the parameters are for noise, there's no, there's no decibel limits in there. So I think Larry and Leah add it to a future study session, which we're trying to get scheduled, have talked to Mayor Potem on Wednesday, to get that scheduled, so that we can talk about tightening our noise ordinance up, and then communicating that with Rocky Mountain Bottle, so that they know what they're, they're working towards, what they're trying to correct. We have several examples of noise ordinances from Arvada, and I think Morrison, and can't remember the other one, and Golden, and then, of course, we have the state statute too, so we can look at all of those. I've learned a lot by meeting with these acoustical engineers, there's a lot to do with noise, and it's, it's pretty, it's kind of fascinating, honestly, but they are really trying to correct the problem, this problem, they want to get it fixed as soon as possible, and they have the green light to, to move it forward. Unfortunately, it's not going to happen overnight, but they are, they are definitely working on it, so.
Thank you. We will go to elected officials' reports, and start with our city clerk, Ms. Shaver.
I guess I'd report to council that we had the referendum protest hearing on Friday. It went from six AM until after six o'clock. The, we finished with the testimony, and the, the two sides have to submit their closing argument, written closing arguments, closing arguments, to Ms. Anderson by eight AM tomorrow morning. And she has five days from after the hearing, and I'm, I'm not real, is it Wednesday? Wednesday is the fifth day that she will, and she will send out a ruling. She spent nine hours here Saturday reviewing the petitions with Mr. Dahl. I was here for seven of those hours, and then came back and put them away safe, safely. So, we'll probably let you know if that can be on the agenda. It would, it, it needs to happen pretty quickly, because we have to get the wording. If, if the sufficiency stands, then it will come to council, and you will have the choice of repealing ordinance sixteen seventy-seven, or, is it sixteen sixty-seven? Yeah. Or sending it to the ballot, in which case, we have about just a week to finalize that and get that word, you know, Mr. Dahl will probably get the wording just right, and so on, so, anyway, that's coming up real quickly, a decision will be made. And then the last thing is that the, there are several folks out there collecting signatures to run for office, and the deadline for that is this coming Monday, so if you, if you are running, and you are listening, and you don't have your petition in, you have until Monday at five o'clock. End of, close of business. And also, today, we started, the employees, and the next time you come to City Hall, it may or may not affect you, the staff implemented a, a system of badges, that visitor badges, for security purposes, so when, now when visitors come in the front door, everybody has to stop at the front desk, and depending on where you're headed, you either get a red badge, or a green badge, or an orange badge, or whatever, and then you are let in, and now the glass doors that lead into the clerk's office, which is for admin and finance and all that, that, those glass doors will be locked now, and, and then to get upstairs will require a badge, and we have this security fellow that, that issues those, and we've had people come in today and use the process, and I, I asked a lady who came in to speak to the clerk's office, and she had a visitor's badge, it was orange, and I said, "What do you think of this?" And she said, "Well, it's kind of, you know, cumbersome," but she says, "I really understand it, because there's crazy people out there, and it's, the whole thing is to protect the staff. It's not the goal just to be a pain in the neck to citizens and business people and stuff like that. It's really, it's a, it's a security thing to, to protect the workers, and, and as citizen-friendly as I like to be, I'm real supportive of this, because there's been, I've had some scary people in my face, so, anyway, that's all, I'll be quiet."
Thank you. Will anyone know further? Mr. Keeter?
Very quickly, on Saturday, I attended the TLC cleanup day at St. Peter and Paul's, and it was, I think, very successful, I think it was sixteen or seventeen dumpsters worth of stuff hauled off-site, and want to commend the police department and local works for putting that on, and the next one will be in Division, in District One on September twenty-first, and hopefully, we will have all sorts of new access roads for people to actually be able to get there.
Do you know what that location is?
Uh, I'm blanking on the church.
Is it the?
No, they, the, the one on the south side.
South side.
The congregational.
Yeah, I can't remember the name.
Apologies to anybody.
Front of the road under construction now, but, okay. Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Number one, for you folks talking about noise up there at the bottling plant, they were doing some work on the crossing lines tonight on the G-line, and so you may have heard horns at eight o'clock for about an hour, possibly longer, so that was just temporary, and they were doing some maintenance, and so they felt that they had to not do the quiet thing. In, in reference to that referendum hearing, I did attend the hearing, and as, I think the only retired old goat on council, I had the time to be able to sit there and learn a little bit, and just, I thought it was important that an elected official be there, since that is a citizen referendum that's, that's at stake there, and have some firsthand knowledge of what was going on. And if anyone has any questions, feel free to call me also, because like I said, I was a retired guy, so I took it upon myself to be there. And for those of you that are wondering why I'm being kind of iffy about increasing storage room in our, in our, our one neighborhoods, I sent an email to, to Mr. Goff here, I think yesterday or whatever, but there's, this was on my door handle the other day, and it's neighbor, and what it is, it's the Airbnb of storage. So now there is an Airbnb of storage where they're trying to encourage people to rent out their garages, or their storage sheds, or whatever, and, and use it for a source of income in our residential neighborhoods. So garage, four thousand dollars a year, maybe, if, if you rent it outright, so this is something that we're going to have to probably start addressing in the near future. But if that helps explain a little bit why I was kind of concerned about building storage sheds on, on, on the side lots, I would hate to see someone make perhaps like on a corner lot, put up a two, a four-hundred-foot deal, and then say, "Well, I'll rent that out to you for a hundred dollars a month," and start turning it into a commercial enterprise. So that's part of why I'm really touchy about, you know, changing some of those setbacks and what have you, and if you have any questions, I can send you, I, I scanned this, I can send you an email and show you what this, what this is, but I hope that explains a little bit of my reaction to the four-hundred, two-hundred-foot size deals.
Thank you. Additional matters for the elected officials' reports. Seeing none, I have nothing tonight, so we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.